Please call the roll.
Just double checking real quick, TVC TV, are we on? Okay, the light's not on. Counselors, Dugger?
I'm here.
Herb Meyer-Prigg?
Here.
Hussin?
Here.
Kimmy? I'll give him a minute. Teeter?
Here.
Tipnan?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here.
And did Kimmy join? He just got promoted. I'll mark him present. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start tonight's meeting with visitor comment. As a reminder, visitor comment is an essential part of local government business. However, it's not a time for dialogue. This is a time for us to listen. We will take your input into consideration, but if follow-up is needed, in order to help us comply with our open meeting laws, the city attorney, or the city manager, or the recorder will do the follow-up. I do know we have a person in the building, so Bob, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Just one moment, Mayor. He's getting set up on the mic.
My name is Bob Fiedler. I am a resident of Beaverton. I've been here for thirty-four years. Way back when, I was a teacher in Connecticut in an inner-city school. Minority was high. But what I want to say is this, I was with the Beaverton Police Department from two thousand and four to when I retired in two thousand and twenty. I worked a great deal with the SROs in multiple events and situations that I think getting rid of the SRO program is not a good idea. They are a valuable asset to many students who would not otherwise talk to an adult. I have seen that multiple times with multiple SROs who helped these kids through some rough patches. Another question I have is in reading this, it says that the the new program has the YSO, is that it? Being employees of the city as opposed to the police department. Are not these individuals certified in police work? If not, how are you going to control what they do? They have a union that's answerable to them also. I don't know how you can possibly change it. I think that the SRO program historically has been a great success. I mean, if you look at the numbers of people who don't like it, as opposed to the people who do like it, there's tremendous difference. Also, in the statement that it said that you can't use the word "many" without documenting the number. And in one of the sections, it said that the SRO program did not support. I'm trying to find it. I apologize. But they said that disproportionate number of LGBTQ minorities, Latinos, non-binary, whatever. Many of them were intimidated by the police. You can't say "many" without giving a definitive number like you did in the other surveys. So again, I am for the SROs and against the new program.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Spencer, you're up next.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
I am Spencer Irwin and am honored to serve our community as Vice Chair of HTRAC. Please understand that my remarks tonight are my own and not HTRAC's positions. Others will be making HTRAC's case. You'll be hearing a lot this evening from my colleagues and community members about objections to the IGA being voted upon tonight. So I won't repeat what you have or will be hearing. Instead, I'd like to reflect on HTRAC and its role. It serves City Council as an advisory commission. Three years ago, you asked it to engage with Beaverton Police Department in a series of conversations about police policies and procedures. Eight months later, it presented a report and its recommendations. A result was that the city and the district engaged C-Change to review the SRO program. HTRAC was at the table when C-Change was selected and the parameters of the project were laid out. As stated, HTRAC is an advisor to council. It has no standing, official or ad hoc, with the district. Dr. Valderras made that clear when he initially refused my request for a meeting, instructing me to meet with city councilors and the city manager. Happily, I was ultimately granted an appointment with Dr. Carl Mead and Carrie Delft, and I think our meeting was productive. My point is this, HTRAC, in writing to the mayor and city council, is fulfilling its role in the city, but it has no official role as far as the district is concerned. It has no portfolio over there. The BSD Board might listen to its concerns, but only as community members, without official standing. HTRAC's charge is by definition to serve the city. And so you, our city council, is where we must make a case. Only you will hear HTRAC's advice, analysis, recommendation, and its pleas. You've been told that the BSD Board unanimously approved the IGA. I believe that characterization to be disingenuous. It's true that the board approved the budget, but they were not given the opportunity to approve the IGA details. That role was reserved solely for Superintendent Valderras. So you, our city's elected officials, who must review and approve all IGAs that the city enters into, are the only recourse for folks you're hearing from tonight. I ask that you please take their concerns to heart and listen with open minds. The IGA is not a contract of adhesion. It can and should be negotiated. We're all concerned with the same thing, the health and safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbie Minor?
Mic check.
Good to go.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor Beatty, City Manager and City Councilors. My name is Barbie Minor. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a Beaverton resident of twenty years. I'm speaking with you today as a mother, a mother whose eldest child just graduated from Southridge High School and whose son will be an eighth grader this fall at Highland Park Middle School. I'm speaking to you as an aunt, whose nieces and nibblings have just graduated from Westview High School. I'm speaking with you as an engaged community member who is very distressed and concerned by the lack of accountability in the IGA put forward for a vote tonight. In short, I am urging you to vote no. Implementing an IGA to enforce SROs at our children's schools without implementing any of the recommendations made in the C-Change report is reckless at best and at worst negligent. Our community, our school district, our city council, our police department, have all been made aware of where the deficits lie and what changes need to be made to ensure a successful SRO program. And yet, if approved as submitted tonight, is a blatant disregard for any indication of accountability. It's like getting the building safety report that states the structure is not earthquake-ready, providing the list of what's needed to upgrade the building to ensure safety, and then just deciding to keep the building occupied, pretending that you aren't aware of the dangers, risks, and harm involved, having not implemented any of the safety measures to bring the building back up to code. Except what's before you tonight isn't a what-if scenario of when the big one hits. We know what happens in schools with SROs. We know that the negative implications overwhelmingly impact Black and Brown students at an alarmingly higher rate than their white peers. We know what we need to do to mitigate these risks and ensure the safety of all of our students. We cannot do that with an IGA that ignores the facts and recommendations made to center the needs of our most marginalized students and establish credibility and accountability with our community. I urge you to vote no on the IGA as submitted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy French?
Thank you very much. I am Kathy, and I thank you for letting me come tonight. A few weeks ago, I was walking with my seven-year-old grandson and was heartbroken when he looked around and he told me where he would run in case of danger. I have a sixteen-year-old here at home who does not want to walk outside at night, not because of criminals, but because of the police, and he's afraid of them. It is so obvious that this is a terrible problem, and here are our children in the schools. The C-Change report says these extreme shifts of opinion, as we are in now with the SROs, may be mitigated by thoughtful planning for alternative measures if SROs are removed and by an intentional redesign of policy solutions that benefit everyone. That thoughtful planning has not gone on. When the C-Change report first came out, council really didn't go over it. This was before most of you were in the council. And it was so obvious that C-Change had done their work, but the council had not. And one of the council members said, "We don't know anything about the police." You are just now beginning the work of finding out how YSOs operate, how the school district handles them, and the school district has made a lot of mistakes, including in this IGA. You need more time for thoughtful planning and to really scrutinize every part of our children's safety. Please take that time and vote no on this IGA and take your time to really know and plan a better one. Thank you.
Thank you. Dori King?
Thank you, Mayor and council folks. I will not take my entire three minutes. I just want to offer this question. I believe I have been a memory keeper, as everyone has said, and given some history. Three years ago, the question was, "How can the council learn about what policing is in the city?" You use C-Change to provide you all a report. My question for you all is, do you feel like you have enough information going forward on this IGA to make sure that you are providing community safety for our children? And that's the question I will, in my time, let.
Thank you, Ms. King. Shabangi?
Hi, let me just get myself set up here. Give me one second. Okay, I'll start now. We all know what's gonna happen tonight. The IGA is gonna pass, and it won't have very much in the way of actual reform. So for something a little different tonight, I'd like to start off with an inspirational message our very own mayor provided us when she was on the campaign trail in two thousand and twenty. It goes as follows. "I have gotten a lot of messages and questions about the role of and funding for school resource officers. Today, I'm announcing my support for following the lead of districts around our area and removing SROs in our schools. I am calling on the Beaverton School District to move funds away from SROs in our schools and shift those resources to other positions that support kids. From my time running school-based health centers and working with school systems, I believe police officers are not the right people to address the issues young people experience. The Beaverton School Board is the body with the authority to make these changes, and I'm asking you to join me in calling on them to do so. By reinvesting this money in resources to support our students, I believe we'll create a safer, more supportive school system. My team and I are working on this topic, and we will have more information soon," end quote. But don't worry, I get it. Things have changed. We have a female police chief and more people of color on the school board. Doesn't matter that the person who's in charge of the program in the school district believes that minority opinions are overrepresented. And again, I completely understand the role reversal on this issue, because it was never an issue of human rights for anyone, right? Because if it was, maybe we would have listened to our Human Rights Committee the first time or the second time. No. This was all about what was trendy at the time. That's what I was thinking about when I was phone banking for some of y'all. Yeah, when I was asking voters to choose you, I knew that this was certainly someone who will keep up with the times and what was trendy. Doesn't matter what promises they made at the moment, because why would I care about those? There's only one thing that I've truly learned from this process, and it's this: Power corrupts, and it has certainly corrupted you.
Right. Aditi? Sorry, I missed pronouncing it.
Hi, it's Aditi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Aditi Kunnam, and I come to you as an advocate of mental health reform and a student in the Beaverton School District. I have seen the mental health crisis firsthand among my peers and on the youth line, where I have volunteered for almost two years. I implore you to reconsider the implementation of this policy, as the policy will have numerous adverse effects in many different facets, as many people have stated here today. But I specifically want to talk to you about the adverse effects on mental health. This IGA will be expanding the jurisdiction of YSOs within our schools. And when it comes to mental health, I think there is a very important conversation to be had around proper regulations when it comes to mental health crises, especially when there are police officers involved. While you have provided the example of a limited amount of training that YSOs would be getting, such as a CIT program, I urge you to include assist training as a requirement and not just an opportunity. I understand that my peers and I will not likely be able to change your mind about the YSO program as a whole, but I urge you to not pass an underdeveloped policy. There are multiple oversights within this policy. The vagueness around the handling of mental health crises is worrying, and if this is not handled, it could in all likelihood lead to an overreach of power for police officers. I would like to highlight the fact that unfortunately, the connotation behind the police uniform also comes with intimidation and will potentially have adverse effects on the handling of crises of young people within these schools. We have seen that dressing down and removing weaponry could work, as said in the C-Change program and as also seen in the Hillsborough School District, but this has not been implemented within this IGA. This will limit, if we do this, it'll limit intimidation and power imbalance simply by just dressing down the police officers, which is a step that still has not been taken within this IGA. The last thing I want to highlight is the fact that within this IGA, the minimum training stated prior to the coming school year is not close to extensive enough. If it is not realistic to train the YSOs and all the trainings listed in the IGA before the school year, it should simply not be passed. Make crisis intervention training mandatory, take C-Change's research into account, and make the right decision by changing the way you go about this policy so that we can address the state's mental health crisis one step at a time. Please vote no on this IGA. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabdi?
Good evening. My name is Sabdi Pacheco-Williams, a resident of Beaverton and a BSD parent of two young boys. I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight, though openly, most of you know me as current Chair of the Human Rights Advisory Commission, which has already provided an official statement via email to council for public record. I am echoing the sentiments of so many of my fellow community members over the course of the past several weeks. I am asking that council vote no on this latest draft of the city and BPD YSO IGA and instead allow time for review and editing so it better reflects the work of organizations who have worked so hard to make recommendations for this program, including but not limited to HTRAC commissions going back to two thousand and twenty and C-Change, the organization hired to research our YSO program, listen to our community, and make official recommendations. A handful of concerns include: uniforms, reporting cadence, which should be monthly, ensuring that these reports are made available to the public, a detailed definition of extreme violence, timing of training around youth interactions, a plan for trauma and special needs training, and most importantly, a clear and written understanding of how we will measure success on this investment. As a resident and parent, I do not understand the point of investing so much time, energy, and taxpayer dollars if we won't follow the recommendations made and consider the concerns voiced by the community as we map out the future of YSOs in Beaverton schools and instead pour efforts into issues that address the underlying causes of issues in schools and support our kids. We need and deserve an IGA solution that is thoughtfully planned, inclusive, equitable, and anti-racist. I believe a truly collaborative effort between city council, the Beaverton School District, the Beaverton Police Department, and the Beaverton community can result in a YSO program that sets the safety standard in violence prevention and response in schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
Good evening, Mayor Beatty and City Council members. My name is Allison, and I am a Beaverton resident and a parent of an elementary school student in BSD with two younger children who will attend BSD schools in the future. We were new to Beaverton and BSD last fall, so we were unable to participate in previous surveys regarding the School Resource Officer Program or Youth Services Officer Program. I have very strong concerns about police being in my children's schools. My review of the C-Change report from two thousand and twenty-two shows me that children like mine have a greater chance of being arrested in school than most of their peers because they are children of color. This is aligned with national data on SROs as well. Ultimately, I would love to see police out of BSD schools. It's very unnerving to hear that the recommendations made through the C-Change report were ignored when drafting the IGA. One of the things the C-Change report recommended was an increase in mental and behavioral health professionals and social workers. And their report cited research which showed, quote, "Schools that employ more school-based mental health providers see improved attendance rates, lower rates of suspension, and other disciplinary incidents, improved academic achievement and career preparation, and improved graduation rates. Data shows that school staff who provide health and mental health services to our children not only improve the health outcomes for those students, but also improve school safety," end quote. I find it appalling to learn that BSD's proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four raises the public safety budget while reducing the budget for psychological services and social workers. After experiencing a global pandemic and increasing dangers of climate change, which will drastically impact our children's lives, our kids need more mental and emotional support than they've ever needed before. They do not need police in schools, but our kids especially do not deserve to have the IGA passed that goes against the recommendations of the C-Change report. I hope we can count on you to reject the IGA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Good evening, council members. My name is Ana Zalit, and I use she/her pronouns. I'm speaking today on behalf of Apoano as a fellow with the Political Policy Advocacy and Civic Engagement Team. Apoano is a statewide culturally-specific organization that unites Asian and Pacific Islanders to build power, develop leaders, and advance equity through organizing advocacy, community development, and cultural work. We believe in the right of all students to receive their education in a safe, generative, and conducive space. As a university student in the broader Chicago area, I've been inspired and drawn to the restorative justice approach to foster deep-seated community safety and belonging through accountability and dialogue that has been implemented in select high schools. I hope to see the process adopted in my hometown with the Beaverton School District recognizing the violence of school resource officers and their inability to restore and transform school communities. While the Beaverton School District claims to have revamped the SRO program with a name change to Youth Service Officers and investigated its effectiveness, an officer in uniform is still a police officer. The SRO, as employed by and in partnership with the Beaverton School, the Beaverton Police Department, does not reflect a safe and trusted adult for many of the students. Until BSD has met the requirements laid out by the C-Change report, an investigation that was ordered by the BSD Board and the city of Beaverton itself, the YSO program blatantly promotes and continues negligence and apathy towards our most vulnerable students. The C-Change report does not call for the removal of the YSO or SRO program, but instead recommends a certain standard that takes into consideration the mental health and well-being of the students with trauma-informed approaches and investing in non-law enforcement, public safety services, to abide by the guidelines established in the investigation and be a powerful and preliminary first step in ensuring the well-being of all students in the district. If the YSO program must continue in the Beaverton School District, I urge you to meet the guidelines established in the C-Change report as a bare minimum step towards community and school safety. By prioritizing and acknowledging the necessity of mental health support networks and services and move away from solving violence for more violence, the Beaverton School District has the opportunity to join the movement to make schools more restorative and generative spaces rather than punitive and perpetrators of harm. I urge you to take a step back to reflect and vote no on the IGA proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. This is Lisa Kipperstock. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a board-certified family and addiction medicine doctor, as well as a primary care doctor and pediatrician in Beaverton at Virginia Garcia. I'm also a member of HTRAC, but I'm speaking as an individual today. So the last HTRAC meeting, I shared with our councillor representative, councillor Havnon, that council seems to be saying that certain things are not possible. Like, it's too hard. It's not possible to remove SROs from our schools. I'm really disappointed in that. I think that these things are possible. They're just scary, and they're hard. And this is a really frustrating conversation to be having, because as an HTRAC member, for the past two and a half years, I've been seeing how we've been making recommendations, and they're just not being heard. And it makes us feel, as Shabangi stated, that, you know, you guys aren't listening to your community. We had the C-Change organization come in and do an independent investigation, and none of our recommendations are getting implemented in this IGA. So we talked to councillor Havnon about this at our last meeting, and she said that the BPD policy has already addressed many of the C-Change requests. Unfortunately, that's just not sufficient in a community where we don't trust our police department. There's a huge problem where a lot of our community members, particularly community members that are not powerful and white, don't feel safe. And we are dependent on you as our representatives in our community to help us feel safe. And what would make us feel safe is writing these recommendations into the IGA, not saying, "Oh, they're already being done. Oh, it's going to be okay. You should just trust us." The problem is, we don't trust you. So please put this information in the IGA as HTRAC requested. We sent you guys our motion. We've sent you guys lots of information. We've made a bunch of requests that are very reasonable, and I would really like to have those seen in the IGA tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Good evening. Today, I've come to ask that you vote against the draft IGA for YSOs. Last month, this council voted to table this matter so that council's issue with the IGA could be addressed. Yet today, we find ourselves with the exact same IGA with no additional required training. In fact, the only required training under this IGA is a basic YSO training. is a basic YSO training that can be completed up to a year after assignment, meaning that school cafeteria workers handling food will have undergone more mandatory training than the school resources officers handling a gun. There is no expanded reporting requirement. There is no statement on dressed-down uniforms. There are no stricter hiring requirements. Hillsborough has managed to do all of these things. These things aren't in the IGA because they are impossible. These things aren't in the IGA because this city has refused to take the bare minimum steps to reform. That's why your own Human Rights Advisor Commission has told you to vote no, why Apoно told you to vote no, why the Beaverton Black Parent Union told, told you to vote no, why Public Defender, who has seen the SRO program at its worst, has told you to vote no, and why eighty-seven residents emailed you to tell, tell you to vote no. Because this agreement will endanger children. If you vote yes, you will be endangering children. This isn't about getting rid of the, the SRO program. Voting no on this IGA won't do that. This is about not actively endangering children, not actively making this program worse. Demand a better program. Vote no.
Thank you. Tom V?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Tom V., and I'm speaking on behalf of the IGA. As a member of Youthline and as a high school student, I've seen a lot of issues surrounding mental health issues among teens. For many students, schools are a sanctuary for mental health support in terms of counselors and social workers because students often do not have familial support or the funds to receive outside help. That being said, the funding distribution in the budget for BSD will be taking away money from social workers and increasing the money for YSOs, which will inevitably increase the res, the responsibility of YSOs and mental health crises. The trainings that are currently in this IGA are not focused on youth mental health. And if YSOs are going to be handling youth mental health crises, youth-specific training should be required for better support. As someone who's been trained in generalized crises intervention and in youth-focused crises intervention, I know there's a difference in how we handle both situations, and this IGA does not acknowledge the difference since it, since it is only providing generalized mental health crises training. Another issue with this policy is its lack of specificity, especially who handles mental health crises. The IGA simply states that they are going to be involved in mental health crises, but does not state who has original jurisdiction and which crises YSOs would be involved with. Mental health is such a fragile situation, and if students are having bad experiences with YSOs due to lack of formal training, they may avoid getting mental health support in schools altogether, which would once again hurt students more than help them. There's little to no empirical data that says that YSOs are effective in mental health crises, and if this IGA is going to be passed, it should delineate all specific situations that may occur. C Change has provided thorough research on how to make a functional YSO program through their extensive research, and these recommendations should be taken almost fully into account, which is something that we have not seen yet. Vote no on this IGA for the future of students. Thank you.
Uh, okay. Thank you. We are on to our first agendaized item of the evening. Uh, it's Agenda Bill two, three, one, five, nine, a presentation on the fentanyl crisis in Washington County. I will turn it over to, uh, our police chief, Chief Jepson.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Um, recently, I was asked to pull together some information to share with you regarding the fentanyl epidemic that we're seeing not only in the Beaverton community, but actually nationwide. Um, in doing that, I requested that Lieutenant, uh, Chris Schreger from the Washington County Sheriff's Office, who is the lieutenant that oversees, um, the WIN team, Washington County Narcotics Investigations Team, come and do a special presentation on what they're seeing with the fentanyl uh, epidemic and, and how to address that and, and the, the measures that they're taking to effectively do that. So I'm going to turn that over to him. Hopefully he's on here.
We do have someone entitled Chris S. Is, if that is you, please raise your hand and we will promote you. We don't have a full name. Okay, we're going to promote him now. Thank you.
Okay. Can you see and hear me now? How about now?
Yes.
Yes, you can see and hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. That was, um, to be honest, that was the easiest promotion I've ever had. I, so I appreciate it. Let me try and share my screen here. How is that? Am I sharing now?
Yes.
Apologize for the little hiccup there. Uh, thank you, chief, for introducing me. I am Chris Swiger. I've been a lieutenant with the sheriff's office for a while. I've been a police officer since uh, nineteen ninety-four. Um, much of my career is spent, uh, investigating narcotics, and currently I am the commander of our inter-agency drug task force, which does have officers, investigators from the Beaverton Police Department on it, as well as sheriff's office, Hillsborough Police, and some federal agencies. Um, this presentation is going to be relatively brief, and I, um, would hope for some, some questions. Hopefully it stir some things up and I can answer some questions for you, but it's really focused on the fentanyl crisis in our region. Uh, it does have a couple, uh, references to methamphetamine because that's still a primary threat as well. So to give you a, to, to start with a little bit of perspective, uh, on this graph, I took out a lot of data that I didn't think was relevant necessarily, but Len Bias assessments are what we refer to when we go to a person's um, uh, death. A person who is overdosed on opioids and they, uh, did not survive. Pardon me? There, there was a federal sentencing enhancement named after, uh, uh, an athlete who, who passed away from this, and his name is Len Bias. So that sentencing enhancement triggered kind of the way we refer to these. So when you see the statistic from twenty twenty-one that we went to twenty-eight of these, that means that in Washington County, my drug task force responded to twenty-eight fatal overdoses in that year. It almost doubled, as you can see, in twenty twenty-two, the calendar year. Uh, we are on par to, um, probably double again in twenty twenty-three. Uh, and this is almost entirely due to fentanyl. Um, heroin frankly is not, um, we're not seeing it as much, and so this is almost entirely from fentanyl. Uh, this slide will just show you again that methamphetamine, uh, dramatically increased again in twenty twenty-two. It is still a primary threat out here, but fentanyl causes more fatal overdoses. So it gets, um, it gets a lot more media attention, but methamphetamine is, is responsible for a lot of, uh, terrible aspects, um, uh, on our society and our culture. So it's very big and it's a huge, um, profit um, producer for the organizations, the transnational organizations that are bringing the fentanyl. On this, uh, slide, in the year twenty twenty-one, we had fifty-eight thousand pills. Almost all of those pills were the blue fentanyl counterfeit, fentanyl pills coming across the southern border. Uh, and the year following, which was last calendar year, that went up to seven hundred and sixty-six thousand pills that we seized. Uh, this is just, you know, what we were able to, to get off the street. So that should, um, shock the conscience, I would think, a little bit. Here is another statistic, uh, graph showing just kind of the, the volumes of the various drugs we're seizing in Washington County on our operations. Again, it stops at twenty twenty-two because, um, we haven't finished this calendar year yet, but I can tell you the trend is, is continuing. The main one I'd want to focus on is near-the-bottom pills. Again, it went up, you know, from fifty-eight thousand to seven hundred and almost sixty-seven thousand pills. Um, marijuana is there, uh, because that is, I think, unbeknownst to some folks, uh, a primary cash, a revenue stream for the same organizations. And I could talk about that if you're interested, but here's kind of what the fentanyl looks like that we're intercepting. You'll notice in the left corner, uh, powdered form, it looks like cocaine, although if we broke one of those bricks open, there'd be enough powder in there to cause fatal overdoses for probably three hundred people. So it's very, very potent. Um, pure fentanyl can, can cause an overdose at two micrograms. Um, that's pharmaceutical grade. The stuff we are getting from the, um, transnational drug traffickers, uh, is obviously not pure most of the time or, or to pharmaceutical grade. But the volume that's coming in is staggering, and the number of overdoses that it could cause directly should, um, again, be pretty shocking. Uh, I've been asked, why are, why are some of these pills not blue? Because the blue pills initially were manufactured to look like the actual pills one would get from a, a pharmacy. If they were, if they were prescribed fentanyl for pain, for example. Uh, and then the folks, the, the organizations that are smuggling this in and selling it to our youth and to, uh, our community members who, uh, have, uh, a problem with it, specifically to opioids. Um, they recognized a marketing ploy to target kids, and so they made these look very similar to Skittle candy. Um, and they called them Skittles on the street. They sell them to, um, many ages of people that are under, under eighteen tragically. Uh, here's an example of a case from last year. Um, again, we took a lot of drugs and guns off the street. They had machine guns and body armor and suppressors. Uh, the folks running this were all, um, staffed by, uh, transnational drug trafficking organizations, cartels, uh, very serious folks. Uh, they had infiltrated a homeless camp in, uh, a neighboring county, and they were using that to stash their drugs and guns, recognizing that it was very difficult for law enforcement to, uh, infiltrate that and, and get any type of surveillance or investigative, um, successes. We, we obviously were able to succeed, but, uh, I would not be surprised unfortunately to see that trend move to our county because these, this group was sourcing, uh, our communities right here in Washington County. Pretty serious. Um, again, methamphetamine, this is an interdiction. We just pulled the car over that we had some information about. They had fifty-four pounds of methamphetamine and three thousand pills. So for reference, one blue pill, we've seen kill a person because the, the, the quality is varying so much that occasionally a single pill will kill somebody, and sometimes it takes four or five to cause an overdose. Fifty-four pounds of methamphetamine is staggering, uh, and frankly, it's, this is pretty regular. You know, a user quantity of meth is sixteenth, that's sixteenth of an ounce. So that is, uh, that was all coming to Washington County. Uh, here's a fentanyl seizure from this year in the spring. Uh, a number of kilos there represented in, all in blue pills, uh, in the vehicle that we caught smuggling in here. Here's another meth seizure from, uh, last month, I believe. Um, again, a staggering amount of this. I should say the methamphetamine we're seeing now chemically is similar to what we saw in the early two thousands and, and, uh, caused, um, people to behave very violently. Uh, you'd see them take their clothes off and run down the street, run through glass windows, be, uh, delusional, uh, et cetera, because of the composition of this methamphetamine. We're seeing that again, the way these producers are, are making it. I think it's because it's cheaper, but, um, regardless, it's, it's frightening. Uh, here's a, um, interdiction we just did last week. This has eight kilos of pure fentanyl in it last week. So that's enough to pretty much cause fatal overdoses for everybody in Oregon times about ten. One kilo has, um, approximately a hundred thousand fatal doses ea, easily, easily. And this is pure. So they're going to cut this with some other product to increase their volume and, and increase their profits. Uh, and this was in one car headed right into, uh, to Washington County. It also had some methamphetamine there, of course, and the colored pills. So unfortunately, when we are arresting these groups, say, for example, a twelve or fifteen-man crew of drug dealers that are dealing this fentanyl to our, to our youth locally, the very next day that our, our informants are getting phone calls from the same organization, saying they're back up and running. They have new, they have new dealers. They can deliver to the same house the next morning. Uh, it's a little bit frustrating, but it should really be shocking. Uh, Narcan deployments, this is just for police. So the sheriff's office obtains Narcan through, um, Health and Human Services in Oregon for free. We then give it out to the police agencies, particularly those that take part in, in the WIN team like Beaverton. And so officers out there, when they respond to an overdose, often arrive before medical professionals, and so the officers are able to deploy the Narcan and save a person's life. And last year, they did that a hundred and twenty-nine times. I should say, a hundred and nine, twenty, a hundred and twenty-nine cartridges were deployed. Uh, to clarify, we're running into mixtures of, um, fentanyl and xylazine, which is a horse tranquilizer, where, um, the Narcan won't bring the person back until you apply, you know, sometimes, for example, five doses because the xylazine has tranquilized them into a state of coma, frankly. So, um, running into some, some bumps with that, but at least our first responders have access to and a pretty decent supply of, of Narcan. And again, this is just the police, not the, not the medical professionals out there. Uh, last slide, our, our future concerns is the, the availability of fentanyl. Um, doesn't seem to be diminishing. Our, our team is, I mean, we're, we're getting awards for the amount of drugs we're taking off the street, but it doesn't seem to be making a difference. And in my professional opinion, that's because we're geographically right next to one of the biggest open-air drug markets on the West Coast, which is Portland, unfortunately. So we, we are seeing that the availability is just right next door. Um, uh, we also have some transnational organizations setting up shop in, uh, large marijuana distribution hubs where they're trafficking it out to New York to make, uh, money, which supports their fentanyl trafficking. And of course, um, you know, staffing is always an issue, but I spoke really quickly. I apologize for that. Lots of information. Um, I look forward to any questions.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, thanks for this. I'm curious, um, how you're operationalizing the recent changes in state law regarding fentanyl. And then I have a second question. I can go ahead and ask that if you, you prefer. I can wait until after you answer that.
Yeah, I, I think, um, it, it's a, that's a, that brings about a fairly long conversation with respect to some of the local law or the, the state law, laws regarding fentanyl. We would anticipate having some more teeth, but at the present time, we're, we're capturing such a large volume that we prosecute many of these cases federally. So we don't have to, it, that's not a good answer, but the reality is the volume coming into this state and this region is so big that the state laws haven't inhibited my team. We're, we're a high-level, high-duty task force.
Okay. Um, and then just high level, um, for this body, uh, the city government, what policy needs can the city do to help stop or slow this down? I get a lot of questions from people that are worried about their family members, their friends, and their community. And I don't have an answer, uh, but I have noticed, you know, I know it's got to be regional, right? But are there things that this body can do? With, with police response, beyond police response, investments, like, like what do we need to do? And I know that's a loaded question, right? Because if, I think if it were an easy answer, we'd do it, and it would already be done, but are there things we should be doing?
No, it's a, it's a fabulous question. Um, well, I'll start with a, a comparison of, uh, the, the results we're seeing in a neighboring county, you know, immediately to our east. And they're tragic regarding the numbers of overdoses, the lack of prosecutions, uh, and the kind of the criminal sentiment is that they can get away with doing pretty heinous things to the community over there. That hasn't completely, you know, uh, washed over to Washington County, and I would attribute that to the support law enforcement agencies have from bodies like yours. The, the funding support, the staffing support. Uh, what I would say specifically to your question is you can help us by supporting us with staffing and money, of course, but, um, and our drug team. But, uh, help us by staying in constant communication about how to message the community on the new trends, the dangers. You know, the, the youth, I'm afraid, have, um, heard somehow that, uh, fentanyl is really not that bad because you can have a friend with free Narcan. So even if you overdose at a party, it's not that big of a deal. I mean, can you, could any of us imagine when we were young thinking, well, heroin's not that big of a thing because I can probably just, you know, have somebody snort something on my nose and I'll be okay? Hundred percent. That's just unbelievable. And so if we can message a counter to that, um, and remind and just maintain that constant, um, um, dialogue with, with the youth particularly, but also the community, I, I think that, that's going to see some positive end roads. And I'm all for enforcement. We need to put the drug traffickers in, in prison and punish them when they cause the death of a person, but that's kind of at a higher level than, than this council. So, yeah, good answer to your question, sir?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Hassan?
Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, so I had a couple of comments and then I heard Counselor Duggar and I just I want to take a moment like. I'm concerned at the point where we're talking about this right now, given the other discussion we have. I had raised that with the city manager, just in terms of like, I don't want these to be conflated with each other. So I just want to say that for the record. Um Counselor Duggar, you asked about like what policy needs. Like, I think that this is a public health conversation, right? Like, I do want to hear from the police, but I want some of our public health professionals also in the room talking to us about what's going on. I think that kids or anyone who's getting involved in drugs is is likely doing it. Um out of some sort of uh, you know, insert. Issue here. And so I don't think this is the space for this right now, but I'd love to have like a follow-up discussion where we're having greater policy conversations. Around how we tackle something like this. I I don't. I think this is a really great presentation, Lieutenant. It's very helpful, but I also think that we're not hearing from our public health professionals and our medical professionals on this. Like, we had an addiction doctor, I wrote it down. Board certified addiction doctor testify, like, I think we just need a couple more experts in the room. I'd love for us to think about like a. Multi-agency task force that looks at this from like a public health lens, but also a law enforcement lens. I think we need more more people in the room for that. Um I think my comments are really going to be limited to how do we create that multi-agency task force? It sounds like when is a uh body of that, but how are we looking at that from a public health perspective? Um and I would argue that investing in our community and investing in our in our in just our people and the people. That that will help us get away from this. I understand that this crisis is is near down the street. Um but I do believe that when people feel belonging and community and acceptance, uh they're less likely. Um there was a comment about kids and fentanyl. Um I just want to take a moment, like, we did lose somebody in the Beaverton School District. We lost um a a a family, a somebody. And so I don't think that it's not known as a serious issue in this community. Um I think we have to continue to educate that as well, but just want to take a moment and honor that because I I am very much aware of of that and. And um that that there is quite a bit of education happening for those of you who who may not know about that. So. I I saw you raise your hand, Lieutenant, if you want to respond.
No, the 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 point you bring up about an interagency group uh is a is certainly a valid one. I'm part of an overdose task force that involves. Or or is actually led by, you know, Oregon New and Health Services out of Portland and um specific to Washington County that has a number of. Physicians on it, et cetera, and I'm just part of that from my perspective. So we do have uh something similar to what I think you described. Um in play now, it has been here since two thousand nineteen or so. Uh and so we we would welcome you to come in and and listen and provide, you know, thoughts and suggestions anytime. It's a great avenue to approach it from multiple angles, for sure.
Awesome. Uh thank you. I'll just say, I think some of the things that we struggle with it as a council now, I'll be frank, as the mayor. And I I testify a lot in Salem is that we're the level of government held accountable for some of these problems unfolding on our streets. But we don't have the tools necessary. We're not the public health agency. That's the county's level of government. We're not the state government that makes regulations on which we operate. And so it's it's frustrating for my colleagues and I to have to be responsible for an issue and we don't have the tools necessarily to fix it. So I I hear Counselor Hussam's um concerns and I share a lot of them about how we're doing this. I just think that we're not the level of government that vote that that is held accountable for this problem. It is the county. So um you know, I think you would get participation with us a as best as we can. I appreciate the information with us tonight. It's just hard because we don't make the policies around some of this and we're, you know, we didn't make, you know, a statewide initiative that made this harder to deal with as well. So I think this is intended to be a presentation and not a a a solution solving session. Which I tend to want to want to jump into. Um. So with that, I will just say thank you for joining us tonight. I think we're we're very aware of the severity of this problem, not only in our schools. Um and addiction has many phases. It's not always what we think it is. And it's sometimes people in mental health crisis and sometimes it's people not in mental health crisis that are addicted to drugs and we see it all the time. So. Um please, if there's some way we can be engaged, I know you're working with our police chief and our police department. And if there's some other way that we can be engaged in solving this issue, I think we're fair game. I just think we're not the level of government that has the tools to solve this today. Chief, did you have any more on this topic for us?
Um no, I mean, I would I would like to just point out that while Lieutenant Schweiger is is talking, you know, more regional. And and specific to Washington County and you did get to see a breakdown of of some of the cases within Beaverton. Um I I just wanted to share with you just for information that just in the last sixty days, we've responded. Uh and deployed Narcan over thirty times in our community specifically. Um and so and that's just first line response. Um you know, when it gets to the wind level. Uh where Lieutenant Schweiger works, a lot of times they're dealing with the aftermath of the actual death and the overdose. Um but as he pointed out, the us administering Narcan is continuing to rise. And the overdoses are continuing to rise. So just more information to add to what he shared.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lieutenant, for joining us this evening and uh thank you, especially with the late hour. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to our next agenda item. Agenda Bill two, three, one, six, zero authorized the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement between BSD and Beaverton relating to youth service officers. I do believe our city manager will be taking lead in this presentation. The floor is yours.
There. Um this evening, I'd like to just remind council, of course, before you, is a recommendation to consider and approve the IGA. Between the city of Beaverton and the school district for related youth um service officer. Uh law enforcement services. But before um we turn things over to the district, we do have them here with us this evening to answer questions. I wanted to just take an opportunity to clip through a few slides to set the table um about a number of things. Timeline of events um to help kind of situate how we um got here and where we began. Uh and then discuss the IGA and its development, um the recommendations that are reflected in the IGA. And then, of course, the status update, there were a number of requests for information, some um actionable uh from the counselors. And then next steps. So this may timeline may look familiar to you. Um back in August of twenty twenty-one, uh the city and the district worked together to engage Sea Change. To review the YSO program. And the Sea Change uh presented findings um and recommendations to both the district and the city in August of twenty-two. And then December of twenty-two, the district um developed an action plan directly in response to Sea Change report recommendations. And we're going to talk more about that because that is what drove the scope of services for a contract that's before you this evening. Um the IGA was presented to council uh June twentieth of uh this year, which incorporates the district's action plan. And then, of course, um we're continuing this item to talk tonight and to unpack a little bit more around uh many of the counselor's questions. So setting a new course with law enforcement, this is really the opportunity um that we have to reimagine uh the contract. The assessment of the program, of course, provided that. And as a reminder, I just want um folks to keep in mind that as we are hearing this information. The IGA is a service contract, so it's where the district provides a scope of services to the city for law enforcement support. For public schools in Beaverton. It is not um a city policy. It is not a school policy. It's not a procedural document. It is the scope of services for um exchanging between two entities. And we'll talk a little bit more about some of the recommendations and how those are manifesting in the scope of services. Um I want to be clear that um this uh um arrangement between the city and the district. Um does reimagine uh the relationship with law enforcement. It does limit the scope of law enforcement in schools. And it does respond to um the recommendations. So I've put together a couple of um matrices for you. I'm not going to go through these in detail, but I want to make a couple of points. Uh one, that the Sea Change um assessment produced two packages of recommendations uh that were incorporated into the IGA. Um the first package um has about nine recommendations and they range from providing immediate response to active shooter threats. Um response to extreme violence, collection of illegal substances and um specifies law enforcement consultation services. Uh which is already embedded through their public um services just a director. So all of these um are reflected in the IGA. The second set here is uh limiting law enforcement role in discipline and mental health emergencies. The IGA references the student code conduct, which delineates what SROs are responsible for um reacting to. It does not include, mental health does not include um any disciplinary action. Uh it also prohibits immigration enforcement of school grounds also. Um in accordance with state law, we don't do this. In accordance with our own policy, we don't do this. Participates uh in YSO's selection process, ensures sufficient training. All the specialized training that Sea Change have requested is reflected in this IGA. Um and then there are two recommendations in which we didn't fully um represent in uh the IGA. Instead, they're modified slightly. One is about uniforms and weapons. The reason why you don't have a level of detail in this is because this is really a labor issue. So we don't want to commit ourselves, um that could get us in trouble with um our labor associations. But instead, the police chief on uh June twentieth made a commitment and is actually in process now of designing a dress down uniform. Very similar to the bike team and we will have details on that shortly. That is a commitment made by the city. Um that commitment does not include changing um the weapons and that is something of a safety issue. And also because our YSO officers are called uh to um do patrol activities and that would be a safety issue. And the chief can speak to that in more detail. Uh recommendation nine, uh data collection and reporting. Um the police department's going to provide data and reports to um the school district by semester by their request. However, um separately, the police uh is going to upload that um information on a monthly basis. To our dashboard, which will go live in fall of this year. And that will be accessible not only to the public, but also be linked uh to the district's uh website. And then uh last, there was another second package of recommendations, they're free to be exact, around communications with students, parents and school staff. That's internal to the district. They do agree to doing those things. And again, our superintendent and sister assistant superintendent speak to that. Um expand training for school administrators and other staff. On something that they've agreed to that is also acknowledged in the IGA and then develop and implement data collection reporting and continuous improvement. Again, that is also acknowledged and um in the actual IGA. And then wrapping up, the the council asked about nine different um informational requests. Some were actionable. And I want to just do a really quick download of what is happening with those. We had a request for neurodivergent and refugee refugee immigrant training. We are already providing and actually require every single officer to um go through neurodivergent training. So we're really happy about that. Um aspects of refugee immigrant um training is actually already in the um district and YSO training. Um it's found under implicit bias, equity and cultural competency, newcomer and multilingual support. And that is also referenced in the IGA. Um I mentioned this previously, um and the council asked for um an update to the police department dashboard. When that would be available with YSO data and that will be in fall. And we will continue to make that accessible and transparent to the community. Um I also discussed uh providing data collection monthly versus two times annually or by semester. Again, uh the district requested that, that we will be providing that information, not only monthly to the counselors for their request. But again, on the um dashboard as well. Uh provide specific language around uh YSO uniforms. Um I touched on that earlier about um issues with labor applications. However, we are dressing down that uniform and we have a commitment to that. Then there was another question about reducing the IGA term from two years to one year. Um the term of the IGA, of course, is for two years. This conversation began with a four-year term. Uh the district reduced it down to two years. Both parties with mutual consent can dissolve the agreement. Um can agree to extend the agreement. And so this is where we're starting at the two-year basis. And again, this can change over time. And I'm sure the district will talk to you about um check-ins on their progress with the IGA over time. Uh this last slide, um there was a request for a purpose statement regarding the YSO program. Uh the district has put um very, very easy, simple to read information on their website about the YSO program. Uh both the superintendent and I have um agreed to come up with a statement that can be both on the city's website and embedded in the district website. There was a question about clarifying the district's definition of extreme violence. Um the district will discuss the type of offenses that trigger a YSO consultation. And again, these are specifically listed in the student code of conduct that is referenced in the IGA document. Um understanding the district's mental health response and approach and plan, this was really important to the council. And this is why the district is here to really go through what the criteria and thought is when they make that call. Uh and then last, uh provide information about why YSO office spaces needed. This was again a request by the district, but also super important because your YSO officers deal with highly confidential, sensitive information. And your students need a safe place to be able to discuss some of this casework that is going to happen regardless of whether the YSO is present at the school or not. Um and so that was important to the district to have that safe space. So next, I think for what we want to do is allow the district to have an opportunity to answer some of your questions and dive deep into your areas of concern. They're going to highlight some of the things that I have listed on this slide from um their recommendations. And and how they responded to the scope of services and get into the policy and procedure. Um they recognize the importance of training for administration and teachers. And of course, um they also will underscore that mental health emergencies and discipline are not include included, excuse me, in scope of services. For the YSO officers. So um keep in mind, as we move through tonight's discussion. Uh there's a couple of next steps that you need to make at the end of this in consideration of whether you want to make a motion to approve the IGA with or without changes. Uh make a motion for any other desired actions you can direct your city manager to provide you any additional information or any work you want me to do with the. Uh school district. And then, of course, you can also request any um applicable information from the school district if you so desire in the school district. Um is it amenable to that? Uh that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I do believe we've got district representation waiting right behind me.
Let's uh hear from the district.
So thank you, Mayor Beatty and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Casta Valderras, uh superintendent of schools in the Beaverton School System. Uh beginning my second year here, um a little bit about me, thirty-four years in the business, twenty years in Hillsborough. And my kids actually went to Beaverton Public Schools here, so coming full circle back home. Um here with uh our deputy superintendent Carl Mead, who is going to be able to answer some questions for you as well. Um first of all, I want to really appreciate the partnership that we've had for over forty years with our school resource officer program. Half of our fifty-four campuses that make up the Beaverton School System reside within Beaverton proper. So half the schools, half the fifty-four campuses do give service through Beaverton where uh the other half, for the most part, are Washington County. With one school being the Hillsborough School District. And I truly appreciate the collaboration we've had and continue to make revisions. I think one thing I want to say with our resource officers. Is the fact that uh is how we really have really focused on training our administrators. And we'll continue to focus on training our administrators and when to call our resource officers. I think that's primarily our uh number one objective. Is working with our 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 own staff, because our our administrators are the ones that call for support from our resource officers. And uh making sure that we're consistent in terms of our protocols. That's something that uh Dr. Mead will take lead with the safety department to ensure that we continue to do that with with collaboration with our police chief. And uh again, that's our number one priority is, you know, when we call our for support is the why behind it. The rationale behind why we're calling for support and uh really appreciate the fact that we do have resource officers. Because I think they're especially trained to work with our youth and think that's something that's important for us if there is a need to support uh a campus. And again, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Mead to maybe answer questions or ma- make any comments, Carl.
Thank you, Doctor Valderras. Um my name's Carl Mead, Deputy Superintendent, Beaverton Schools. Um like us, I've served in this community for a long period of time. Uh all three of my children have graduated from the Beaverton School District. And I'm entering into my thirty-eighth year of service uh for Beaverton students. So with that, um I've had the pleasure and uh opportunity to be able to work with our SROs previously and now moving to a title change of YSO. Over the last several years, approximately the last seven years specifically, meeting with them on a regular basis. But certainly going back all the way to my principalships in the district, um that goes back twenty, thirty years ago. Um in terms of involvement of our SROs at the elementary, middle and high schools. I have been a principal at all three of those levels. One of the questions that came forward to us from uh the city. One of the questions that came forward to us from the city manager was circumstances of extreme violence. And when in fact, what we consider extreme violence. Most importantly, it's when a student is engaged in self harm and or harm of others. And we limit that very specifically to those circumstances. There's a lot of things that happen in a school, as many of you know. And we've got resources already available to us in terms of, and we heard people speak about this evening, about social workers, about counselors, our own administrators who are well trained and gifted in a lot of these areas. And so those are our first tools of resource for our students and our families. So we absolutely want to, to push that first. In terms of mental health, we are not turning to our YSOs for mental health services. We are well vetted within the school district for mental health services. And quite honestly, I can't think of a circumstance where we have called our YSOs or SROs previously into our school district specifically to address a mental health issue when a student wasn't causing harm to themselves or others. And I can only think of one issue in the last five years specifically where that was the case. Another topic that has come forward is office space in our schools. For as long as I have known, we have always had office space at our high schools for our SROs. And in the I G A, we are planning on continuing that practice. And part of that is, is it not just simply to conduct investigations that our YSOs will be involved in. They work and operate with DHS. They follow through on unfortunately, a number of circumstances that happened to our students potentially in our schools, but also in our community. That's not limited just to things such as theft or those types of things. Unfortunately, we have students who are victims of rape and the sort. And we need opportunity for that level of privacy as well as investigation within our own facilities without trying to hunt through a building to find a space for our officers to work with our students. In addition to that, I think it's been depicted that our YSOs are the ones who are the one seeking students out. I can tell you on a daily basis, our YSOs are sought out by our students on a regular basis based on concerns or hearsay that they have. And it provides them a space to know that they can find a YSO in the building and how to access, but also share that information with them. It's incredibly important for us that that line of communication goes both ways. And most essentially for our students to be able to find access to them. Last summer, after, sorry, summer of twenty two, after the sea change report, our student code of conduct, we went through and made significant changes within that. And narrowed that down to seven circumstances when in fact, our administration are to consult with law enforcement. Those areas specifically are about engage about assault, bullying and harassment, dangerous drugs specifically for distribution or selling, not use, fire setting. We would also access our fire departments to that. Sexual harassment, threats and menacing, and then weapons. That was narrowed down to seven different items within our code of conduct out of thirty four total. And initially it used to be approximately fifteen to seventeen different circumstances in which our administrators were required per se to consult with law enforcement. We have narrowed that scope very significantly. And simply because we ask our administration to consult does not mean action would happen in terms of law enforcement. Oftentimes that consult is a phone call. It is just finding out information just to be able to get more specific information and potentially other history regarding that student. Excuse me. And then finally, the last top, and it's not the last topic, but the one I wanted to address right now was administrative training. This is ongoing for us and will continue to be ongoing. We with our principals on a monthly basis. We had several trainings over the course of the last year, working with our administrators. And that's just not administrators, sorry, it's administrators who are principals as well as our assistant principals in our schools. And they are the vehicle in which YSOs are contacted. It's typically through non emergency, if in fact a YSO is not in the building. YSOs are not contacted. We don't solicit that our teachers and our counseling staff move forward with contacting them. We ask that they work through our building administration. And they are working in conjunction with our public safety office as we want to be contacted. And that was a change that we implemented this last year. It used to be in essence free access from building directly into the police department. And we have now made sure that there is a loop in there that we are included in that public safety through our public safety office. If our public safety officer is not available, that would come through then my office and consult with myself to move forward with final consultation, final consultation with law enforcement. I'm sure there's other questions that you may have, but I just wanted to address those right off the bat.
Okay, is this where you want us to ask questions? Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. I know it's late and this is a topic of conversation the council is invested in. I think Dr. Mead, you and I have talked about this probably since the day I took office and before. And I have been, as eloquently pointed out during public testimony, an advocate of removing SROs from our schools. I've thought a lot over the last couple of weeks, particularly since this report came out about what the decision the council is being asked to make. I'm not being asked to make if I believe SRO should be in the school or not. That's a school board decision. I am being asked if our, if we want to be the contract provider for that. And if we are, what criteria are we willing to allow our officers to be in the school? So that's the decision that council gets to make tonight. So I want to make that clear because it's challenging for our community to understand. And we're only fifty percent of the school district. So decisions we make tonight will impact half the school district, but not the other. You could be in a middle school in Beaverton, in a high school and unincorporated and have an SRO during your, you know, under years and not in the high school year. So I'm taking a lot of this into account as we're making this decision. I sent the weekend with calling school board members, not just in Beaverton, but other school board members because I've struggled with this where we are. I would say that there is still, I don't want to say unsatisfied with the, some of the question, but my main concern and has continued to be my main concern is how do we inspect what we expect? I have worked in your schools. I've worked alongside of your schools. And I want to say that I believe that you will do all, do all the right training with administrators. But our job is oversight. I have ideas on how I think oversight should be accomplished in this, but I want to hear from you guys. How are you going to assure the city council that officers are being called appropriately? It's one thing to say it. It's another thing to have something in mind. My thoughts, I don't want to say oversight. I think oversight gives people the idea that they can impact what is changing. But I like the idea of a review committee once a year to go over calls about SROs. Did they need to be called? Were they used appropriately? Because our officers are going to respond when they're called. And my concern continues to be, what about the training end of it? So could you both maybe address that concern that I have?
Yeah, you speak that pretty quickly and I think
Sorry, I'm a fast talker.
No, no, that's good. This is good. So thank you for the comment. I, I, I think the, the question regarding oversight. I think, you know, beyond school resource officers, your, your resource officers, we also work with other agencies such as state police and FBI on occasion. We've had a lot of squatting calls in the past that we have to involve federal agency as well. So and also with our street patrol when we do have to call and there's no SRO or YSO available. So I think it's just how do we interact with law enforcement period as a school district and a large system, you know. Our district encompasses roughly two hundred and eighty five thousand people that as a, in our, in our district that really mirrors the, the THPRD boundaries. And we want to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our kids and our community as a, as a, as a broad community. So to your point about, about oversight, you know, we would do whatever council would want to see in terms of any information and be able to share information in terms of how we are utilizing our resource officers within Beaverton proper. And I think that's always the best practice to, to be able to also utilize the information with Washington County and even the city of Hillsborough as well. So I'd welcome the opportunity to be able to share more information on a regular basis because that's also keeps us accountable as well to our own school board and to our broader community.
Mayor. Thank you. If I believed I had the jurisdictional power to compel a review committee, I would. I think that this is your responsibility and your ability to do it. My hope would be that we could come to some agreement in a memorandum of understanding of a review once a year. Because it's in our, my officer's best interest and your, your administrator's best interest that we do an after action review of calls, whether it's from the sheriff or the FBI or anybody else for that matter. I think we need to go back and use it as a training and learning opportunity. And so for me, I'd really like a seat to move towards an M O U around review and what that looks like. You know, I would think it would be a member of the, the administration, a member from your union, a member of one of the police officers and a couple of community members. And I think we should agree to pay people for their time to do this review work. And I, I believe that the sheriff would want to review this information as well. So that to me continues to be my main concern this evening. Counselor Hassan.
Thank you. I do want to make an initial comment just for everyone's sort of context. We might be the service provider, but we are the service provider that is writing the check. And this is a million dollar program that the city council has decided to opt to pay for. And so that's fine. It's a service that we're providing the school district. Given our budget crisis and the fact that we had to close a library two days a week out of seven for the sake of kind of preserving the city and knowing that this million dollars is being spent. Like that sits just a certain way with me. A question for you, Jenny. I didn't see this PowerPoint on the city council agenda. Is that, is it, is it going to come to us? I just, I had a love, a couple of people reach out. I wasn't prepared to, to review that presentation. So I'd love to make sure we all get it.
Yes, that will be posted. We're working through lots of other agenda items to try to get that to you. But I finished it like at the last minute, but it will be posted for the public.
Okay, thanks. I think in the future, just having those posted before council would be ideal. Dr. Valderras, Dr. Mead, a couple of these questions are going to be for you and they're a little bit general. And again, we're, we're, we're cutting the bill, you know, we're cutting the check for this. So I kind of, I have to ask these questions. You know, your slogan is around belong, believe, achieve. You know, we've heard that twenty to thirty percent of students, based on the data, not necessarily all the things that we heard today, maybe feel uncomfortable or unsafe with, with police in schools. How are you looking to address that?
Good question. So I think the way I would answer that is they continue working with our youth regarding, you know, just how to make sure that they feel a sense of safety on our campuses. I think, you know, we're number one, kids can't learn if they don't feel safe. I, you know, I've been an educator, been a teacher at all levels, elementary, middle and high, as well as Dr. Mead. And making sure that we work with our students and especially our marginalized students, being Latino myself. You know, I come from a migrant family that come from Mexico. So I absolutely understand. You know, my parents were not, anyway, just I have my own personal story like we all do sometimes. And just making sure that our kids feel safe on campus, but working with students that are feeling most marginalized by our campuses. And making sure that we understand the why behind it. And I think we have in Beaverton had done a really nice job. And prior to me being here, this is not my doing, but previous administration and previous staff on the behavioral health and wellness teams. I think we have model programs here in Hill, in, in, in the Hillsborough, Beaverton area. And in Beaverton specifically, our behavioral health and wellness teams have been just outstanding and have been a model statewide. And I know we've stated earlier that reduction of some level of service, well, that has to do with federal dollars as we all see an impact with less federal dollars. But again, we have made a strong emphasis of keeping as much as we can for as long as we can. And we're going to continue to work in terms of how do we strengthen our behavioral health and wellness teams at our campuses to ensure our kids feel safe. Carl, if you want to add anything?
No, that's, you covered it. I think the only thing I would add here is Dr. Valderras is the increase in which we have done in the last three years of our social work. We, we ramped up from approximately four social workers to well over thirty five, if not higher than that at the present time. With no intent of removal of these positions. They're part of the B H and W teams. And they're working directly with our students in our schools and they're assigned to the schools specifically. So they're not shared necessarily between multiple schools. They get to know their student populations. They get to know student groups. And Counsel Hassan, I appreciate it's your comment about making sure students feel safe. And I think that this is a major strategy for us to ensure that we continue in this effort. And it's not a one and done. This is ongoing and circumstances change. Family circumstances change and evolve. And so it's going to be highly important that this dialogue continues for our students across all avenues.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I hear you. I just, I don't know, like there are twenty percent of kids who don't feel safe right with this program. And so I, I want to feel like we're working towards that. So I just, I want you to think about that maybe a little bit more. My next question was about training that school leaders are getting around rules of engagement with police. Dr. Valderras, you mentioned that you're working on that. I mean, I think our, I know I would like to see that. I'd like to understand what that training is. You commented that administrator, administrators need to make calls and get training. And for everyone's knowledge, I was a high school teacher. I taught in Beaverton High School and I taught at Sunset. So some of my questions will get a bit in the weeds, but a teacher can call the SRO. So how is that training going beyond the administrators? So just something for you to think about, like what training school leaders are getting. But not just school leaders, because in, in my high school or in the high schools I was in, some of, some of our teachers did have a direct line to the, to the police. And so just understanding what that training is. The mayor kind of addressed the next question about who really owns oversight into this program. But I'd love to hear like from you both, like who do you see as the people having the direct oversight into this program?
I could answer the, the first one about who, how to train folks. You know, anyone can call nine one one, anyone and teachers need to sometimes call nine one one if there is an absolute emergency happening on campus. But typically SROs and Carl, correct me if I'm wrong here in Beaverton, again, only been here a year. But typically SROs are called through by the administration. So if I'm wrong on that one, please let me know. But typically anybody can call nine one one and, and in case of an emergency and the calls get routed back through the district to, through the main office. And then the district office is also contacted. Carl, can you elaborate a little bit more on?
I ask again, Counselor Hassan, several protocols have changed since your time in Beaverton Schools that we do require that we go through administration, not to say that a teacher won't necessarily reach out to a YSO or to nine one one. Nine one one is also routed through our public safety office. So we're also immediately notified of those circumstances. In the event of a YSO being sought out by a classroom teacher, that YSO in conversation with them and our expectation, just as it is with the chief, that they are circling back to our building administration for awareness. So that they have a level of awareness to say, receive this call. Are you aware of the situation?
Okay, I hear you. I, I do know a lot of teachers who have, you know, the YSOs on their, on their cell phones, right? And I, I'm not saying that they shouldn't call. I just, I'd like to make sure that we have the right, that they have the right protocols around when they're calling. Would you, the oversight question, sorry, did, did we get that one?
We have, so the way I would answer that is we have oversight over our administrators. I don't have oversight over the police officers. So that's, but I do have oversight in terms of when our, our, the training that we have regarding our administrators in terms of when they do call. And going back to what Dr. May was saying, Carl was saying regarding the protocols of when we, how we train our, our, our own admin of when to utilize the services of an SRO when impacting kids.
Okay. I mean, I think this is like, would you agree with me that having police in schools who lack proper training can lead to students being harmed?
I would respond to that, that I would any day of the week would rather have a YSO personally, based on my thirty eight years of experience in a building versus just having patrol available to us. YSOs are far more versed. They've had background training. They know students and they are making a commitment to work in our schools. This is not just anyone who is placed into these positions. They make a choice to work with our schools, to work with our students and to have access. So on any day of the week, I prefer that over just straight patrol. And without YSOs, that's what we would be dealing with and they would not necessarily have the background training that's been listed in the I G A.
Okay. And so why wouldn't we make specific training required in writing in the I G A like training for neurodivergent students?
There is training listed. There's on page four of the I G A. There's several. There, I'm sorry.
I don't believe it's required.
City shall ensure that the YSO attends annual training related to the school based training.
So it's not required. So just let me ask this next question. Maybe this is for Jenny or the city attorney.
Wait, let the city, let the city manager ask. She's a muting, Counselor Hassan. Go ahead, Jenny.
So that training is required for every single police officer in the city of Beaverton. So it is part of our curriculum. So it goes without saying. That being said, you certainly, if you wanted to emphasize that, it could be that the council adds that in the language of the I G A. But it's a requirement for all of our police officers, not just our SRO officers.
Okay, that's helpful because yeah, and I would say I'd like to see that. In the last meeting, I had asked the city to include mandatory data reporting on race, ethnicity and sex. And specifically had asked for that to be included that in the I G A. And specifically had asked for that to be included that in the IGA. Is there a reason that we didn't do that?
Is that a city manager question?
Can you, can you repeat that?
Sure.
For.
Yeah, uh, mandatory data reporting on race, ethnicity and sex. And I'd asked for that to be specifically included in the IGA.
Is that for all YSO information? Is that for school or is that just in general? Cause we can incorporate anything that you would like, um, as a part of our database.
I mean, ideally I would like us to update the IGA with as much language as possible, based on the recommendations from the C change report. So for this.
That would be at the discretion of, of the district and we're responding to the district's open source.
Right. So I'll just put that out there that I like to see that. Um, I did pull up the collective bargaining agreement for the police. Can I just understand, like, it doesn't mention bicycle police and like wearing different uniforms. So I know that collective bargaining, bargaining agreement has come up quite a bit.
Would it be, that wouldn't be listed in collective bargaining agreement. The, the point is, is that you do not want to have labor negotiations or anything that's implying that you're making an agreement that's going to fundamentally change the uniform and their ability to provide service or safe service without having a meeting confer. So it's more around labor law and it's around bargaining and doing that fairly. And so we don't want to put any language that would be committing ourselves outside of a labor conversation with BPA. Uh, that's just good standard practice. However, I think you've heard the chief now say on a couple of occasions that we are endeavoring to create something that is non-traditional, that looks like the bike uniform. But I don't want to speak to that. Chief can probably give you some more details if you have questions around that. And that's actually actively happening right now. And that also goes to weaponry, like that's not going to change. And that also has to do with some labor and just overall safety issues. Because you had made a comment that I wanted to clarify about that we're paying for this program. And in fact, we're not paying for the program. We have a hundred and thirty-eight sworn officers. Seven of them are dedicated or assigned to be a YSO. If the YSO program list hypothetically, we didn't have it anymore, that number would not turn to one thirty-one. It would stay at one thirty-eight because those officers are assigned to this. They continue with that case work. All of that work and patrol assignments do not go away. They're embedded into the one thirty-eight to do day-to-day operations. And the YSO is one aspect of their job. So we're not paying for the program. In fact, the school district is starting to pay fifty percent of the time that we dedicate with our officers into the program. So I wanted to make sure I understood you correctly. And so I could clarify that. That doesn't mean that seven officers go away. We actually will stay at one thirty-eight sworn.
Okay, thanks. Um, you mentioned seven instances, Carl. It was assault, bullying, drugs. I can't read this one, but it says something sexual harassment weapons. The bullying one, like help me understand that, you know, I, isn't the practice of the school district to, to move towards a more of a restorative justice? Like, why are we involving police in that?
Yes, uh, sorry. Let me find that. So specifically in here, it is when it comes to bullying, harassment and hazing, it is specific to sexual harassment in that we are expecting law enforcement to be involved at that point.
Uh, I know that I'm taking quite a bit of time, so I'll just wrap up my comments. Um, I am not comfortable with the IGA unchanged. I'd like to see changes. I don't think we're asking for unreasonable changes. Jenny Superintendent, like we've talked about the changes we want. I think we just want to see him in writing. I do believe that these are things that we should ask for and expect to be in writing. Our community is asking us to do this. We've paid a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars for this D change report. So I'm just really concerned that we're not listening to this report. I'm not going to keep talking. I will say I'm still bothered by the home ba, the home base issue specifically. Um, and that limiting law enforcement, because I also heard you say self-harm or harm to others. And that is very general in terms of like, I don't want to set up our officers for success, like, like, or I want to set them up for success. That is not setting people up for success. So at this time, without some significant changes and you know, acknowledging that other counselors still need to speak, like, I'm not really comfortable supporting this IGA. I'm super amenable to at least getting some of these recommendations for C change, from C change to happen. The community has spoken via this C change report. I think that is the best thing that we can do. I think it's the bare minimum that we should do. But I will let other folks ask their questions. Thank you.
Counselor Duggar.
Uh, I'm also going to apologize to all stakeholders. I've got a lot to get through on this. Uh, but I want to start on a positive and acknowledge a couple of things, including the large community response that we've all received. You've given me as a new counselor, heck, a lot, a heck of a lot of things to think about. Um, I also want to thank city staff, uh, particularly Chief Jepson, um, MBPD for the quick response to my inquiry about neurodiver, neurodivergent training for the YSO officers. In fact, the rest of PD will get that training. So again, I'm going to start with a thank you there. For me, uh, I am again disappointed that this forum for this conversation isn't the school board. We all know the scope of this conversation tonight for this IGA with the city of Beaverton. But, but Beaverton School District has officers from at least two other jurisdictions that aren't affected by this. To have a complete conversation, BSD needs to do it. You need to leave there. And clearly there's a community appetite for a holistic conversation about this. I am genuinely disappointed. Genuinely disappointed that as a city elected official, and by the way, this is way out of my lane of expertise and experience that we have to leave here. But I do have some serious concerns with the IGA that I need answers for, before I can truly commit to supporting it. I think you might have answered, but I want to, I want to paraphrase. Dr. Mead, you said the bullying, harassing, harassment and hazing in the student code of conduct in the student code of conduct was in reference to sexual assault or sexual harassment. Is that correct? Did I understand that?
That is correct.
Okay, so that does answer, ultimately, one, one of my concerns was, uh, we talk about how there's not going to be a mental health response and at least probably three presenters have said that tonight. One of the, I believe it was the Black Parent Union called for us to delineate the limited circumstances in which a police officer would be called for that. I think about intersection, right? I think about bullying. I think about neurodivergent students having different ways to communicate that could be interpreted as harassment, that could be interpreted as bully. And those are, those are clearly mental health issues. And I, I just, I, I really have concerns with that. Number, but, but I'm going to move on from that one because we've largely, I think, addressed that. So this is a two-year agreement. However, the cost sharing that Jenny referenced is phased over four years. Why not two years? Since we may not even extend this to four. And, and I have a bunch more, so.
It is two, it is two years.
Uh, it's the cost sharing is phased over four years in our agreement. But the total agreement is two years. And so I'm saying, why aren't we, weren't we doing the cost sharing over two years, right?
I believe that there's a ramp up period as well for the district. I don't have that data in front of me, but that could be one of the reasons.
Thank you, Jenny. That is the primary reason is for us to ramp up as we have not done the cost sharing in this. And so it was an opportunity for us to wrap this up over four years' time.
I have concerns with that mostly because for the Hillsborough IGA, you, you paid for seventy-five percent of theirs. Um, why should, why should we agree to less? Right?
I'm sorry, what are you referring to? Seventy-five percent of what?
The, the, the cost of the Hillsborough officer. BSD reimburses the city of Hillsborough seventy-five percent right now, today, to this day. And you're asking us to take twenty-five percent. So I know that Hillsborough is in a much better financial position than we are. So help me understand why the, the residents of Beaverton should subsidize, the hundred thousand residents of Beaverton should subsidize the two hundred and eighty-five thousand people. That, that, you know, help me understand that. Where, where's the thinking on that?
The Hillsborough IGA is a, was an agreement that was reached between Beaverton School District and the city of Hillsborough to be able to provide support at one school, which is in the Hillsborough School District, and that's base located on one hundred and eighty-fifth avenue. It is the only school within the Hillsborough School District. And it is that anomaly in which services, we wanted services to be able to be, to be provided there. And the city agreed to, that was the agreement in which we came to.
So, so we, you're just asking Beaverton to take less for this ramp period? Am I understanding that correctly?
I'm not asking you to do anything. Uh, this is just the agreement in which we have now sat down and had a conversation with, currently with city leadership on.
Uh, we'll move on to section three point eight point two. Uh, my biggest concern with this agreement is the lack of clarification on training. I believe Counselor Hassan brought this up. I believe the mayor brought it up. Well, Beaverton School District will be held accountable to make sure staff is trained on when YSO should get involved. Uh, if a child is harmed because of a YSO being involved in an issue that they shouldn't have been involved in, because they are going to be very responsive, that could result in a lawsuit in which the city is a party. Have a big concern with that. So let's move on to section seven point one and eight point one, which uh, which clarifies the indemnification language. It feels very weak to me, especially in light of issues raised in that question, right? So question for Bill or the city legal staff. Does the city current, does the current language city from lawsuits based on improper request? So if a, if a teacher or an administrator improperly requests a YSO officer to do something, are we a party to that? Or could we be a party to a lawsuit?
I think we need the city attorney to step in here. Counselor Duggar is starting to ask administrative questions in this IGA. And so if you could just make sure we're okay.
Yeah, I thought he was in here. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, no, I'm here. Um, you're looking at eight point one indemnification and your fact scenario is a school official, teacher, administrator calls for an SRO to come in a situation where policy would say the school administrator teacher should not have called for the SRO to come. But the SRO comes because they've been called. And then whatever happens results in a lawsuit. I think the practical answer is that everyone involved, potentially if that party was going to be suing, is going to include both the school district and the city. That's what a good plaintiff's lawyer would do is that these are all the possible people that might be responsible. So I'm going to name them all in the complaint. Then comes the question of indemnification. And what we have here is a mutual indemnification clause, which is good. And I think that essentially what would happen, it's going to be very fact dependent. But it's going to be who's predominantly responsible for the error. And that's going to depend on the facts of that situation. What you can say about this indemnification clause is that um, at least it goes both ways and you'll be able to look at the facts and sort out who's predominantly responsible. And hopefully find that, um, the more innocent party is kept from having to uh, expend as much money as the party that's more actively negligent. I hope that answers the question. It's very fact specific though, the question you're asking.
Yeah, I know. It's, that's, that's helpful. Um, stick around though. Uh, section ten point one, um, basically there are no promises other than this agreement. This makes me nervous, particularly around that training question I referenced earlier, right? Because this was, I think, if I'm reading correctly, this says that like verbal agreements or agreements for, that, that we kind of agree to without it being in this agreement aren't real. Is that correct? Like this, that specifically calls out that if whatever language we want needs to be in this agreement. Am I reading that incorrectly?
No, I think, I think that you're essentially, this is meant to say that within the terms of this written document, you find the agreement and you don't go outside of the terms of the document. If there are attachments or exhibits to the document and they're referenced in the agreement, those are included in the scope of the agreement. Uh, so you know, if you had something that was an exhibit attached to this, um, that would be within the scope of being part of the agreement. But I do agree with you that that takes you to, if it's not within the terms of this document, it's not part of the agreement.
Yeah, that, that's what makes me nervous about lack of oversight and training. And, and I know that both, both superintendent and, and the associate superintendent have, I believe you both genuinely, you're credible in my mind. But I think we need, I think we need landing, language on the staff training before I'll be comfortable. Like what is your plan? And how are you going to hold yourselves accountable? I like the mayor's idea, but I need to see the specific plan and how we're going to accomplish it and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable for that. Uh, moving on, uh, I know we talked a little bit about the language of the uniform. In the Washington County's uniform, uh, sorry, in the Washington County's IGA, the language says SROs will wear approved department uniforms, formal business attire or business casual with appropriate logos and name badges, depending on the time of the school year, the type of the school activity or program and the request of the school or county. I think that's really interesting based on what we've heard. I'm okay personally with, uh, the, the bike. Like the Beaverton Bike Patrol, I think their approach, and I believe uh, Chief Jepson on that, like I'm, I'm good with that language, but it does make me pause that Washington County gets language closer to what C change requested. I also think, uh, coming up to the end of mine, BSD would do well to convene a multi-stakeholder group to make recommendations. And this, I've also believe comes from the Black Parent Union. Could be attributing the wrong, uh, group and I apologize if so. To make recommendations about narrowing and prohibiting the use of disorderly conduct as a charge for student behavior when no other crime is alleged or committed. Uh, I think we've got to do that because I think that makes a lot of sense to me. Because we've got to figure out ways to reduce implicit bias. And I know our police are good. I've had incredible reactions. I'm fully supportive. But we've got to think systemically here and at the system. I think that would help me get closer to a yes. And then my final, that was a comment. My final question is, I want, can someone clarify what data is actually being collected and displayed? I know Counselor Hassan requested some on, uh, race and sex and things like that. But, but what is the plan there? What are we, what are we actually going to display? I would really, for me, I would like to see some of this oversight data live. Right? Like how many times was a mental health, not sort of mental health, because that's not, you know, but, but these intersect bullying, harassing. You know, how many times did a, did a, a staff member contact a YSO and if was found to be inappropriate, right? Like those are like, I want to see that number and I want to see it going down, right? And, and in order for us to do that, we have to hold ourselves accountable by being transparent and open. So can someone clarify what data is being collected and displayed in the dashboard? And then I have one more, excuse me, one more question after that.
Captain Master Polito, are you the one that's going to answer the data question?
Sure, I can, I can definitely speak to that. Um, as being just, I just met with WAC to kind of go over what we're, what we're looking to capture. So what, what we're looking to get is when the YSO clears their call. What we're hoping to capture is not only the demographics of the students involved. So we want to capture similar to what we do now with the stops data on traffic stops and, and person contacts. Capture that component, um, for the YSO level, but also include how is the YSO contacted? Why are they at the school? Was it from a, a student, uh, staff or administrator? Was it from DHS? Was it from a parent? So we're trying to capture, our goal is to kind of capture, you know, in twenty, in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, the YSOs responded to over twenty-five hundred calls for service. What we want to provide on a monthly basis is of that month's calls, how did we get there? What was the driving force behind the officer going to the school? And then once we capture why we were there, kind of the disposition of the call, was it for a referral? Was it for a consultation? Was it for just an event, maybe a come and teach in a class? Was there a criminal activity or a nexus? Or was there a situation where we, we've had where the officer gets there and it's not one of the The officer gets there and it's not one of the designated code of conduct issues. And we advised that this is outside of our scope and. We just leave, like we'll clear the call at that point. We don't get involved. So we, our touch point is with the administration first before we even engage. Um, does that kind of?
No, that's, that's super helpful. I think what I wanted to hear.
That's our, that's our goal for the upcoming year. Yep.
Uh, Captain, can I ask a follow up on that? So I mean, we all know when there's times that it's not going to go through WACA. And councillor Hussin made some points around that earlier. So what is our directive to our officers about reporting? Because not every time they have an interaction, it's reported. So how are we going to account for that information?
So what we plan on is if there is a situation where uh, vice principal or principal calls the YSO directly. They're going to actually initiate a call for service in, from their vehicle. So each officer um. Has the ability to get in their CAD system and actually create a call. So they'll create either an extra patrol or premise check initially to make that initial contact with the administrator. So we will be castrant on the, on the backend. So additionally, if we're in the school and. We may be contacted by two or three kids, one teacher, maybe a parent, they're going to be documenting that in their notebook and actually set up individual calls. So they may go to the school and spend an hour there, but have four or five contacts. So that the goal is that they would create. Four or five different calls for service in order to con, to capture um, holistically what they're doing at the school at any given time.
Your last question, councillor Duggar.
Yeah, uh, question for the superintendent and uh. Maybe a device superintendent, associate superintendent. What are you going to do if we vote no on this? Like realistically, what is going to be your response? Like, how are you going to do this?
What we would do is continue to work with the chief in the city in terms of uh, trying to um. Do what we can to keep our kids safe on our campuses and be able to have the right response on our campuses. So again. Uh, I think just working with the police department with the city of Beaverton in terms of what we can do. And uh, how we continue to work together. So there's still going to be a partnership. There'll still be a partnership with, with the city. Uh, like we, again, we are, we are partners. The partnership would just look a little different.
Are you, is, let me follow up then. Are you willing to negotiate on some of these things?
I think we're willing to do, again, absolutely. I, I think this is something where, again. We're being asked to come to you tonight to answer questions. I think internally, I think you need to work with your city manager. And then the city manager will work for our staff in terms of see what's doable. Again, we have our own legal team as well. So again, uh, I think that's something that I would work with your city manager who's been uh, very, very communicative with us. As well as the police chief in terms of trying to uh, get this resolved as quickly as possible before the school year starts.
And what is the hard deadline for that to be completed by?
Right now we have an IGA that's open ended. So the current IGA that we currently have would continue to roll over until the IGA stops. Or this, or this adopted, yeah.
So, okay, so there's not like a hard deadline that we have to do this by if, if we want to work on this some more.
No, we have, we currently have an active IGA.
Got it. Uh, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, and just for clarity, the council doesn't have the authority to negotiate an IGA from our public seat like this. That's not the way that our government is designed. We'd have to give direction to the city manager. On what we would want to see and then there would have to be some negotiation, but there, there's not a path where the seven of us are sitting here and, and going back and forth. Just to make sure everyone knows. Um, okay.
For being very generous with your time.
Councillor Kimmy.
Um, most of the questions I have was already asked by uh, councillor Hassan and councillor Duggar. Thank you so much. I didn't, I don't have to ask all that questions. And I also thank Dr. Aldears and Dr. Mead to come in uh, today to spend this. Late hours uh, answering to our questions. I just have a. Quick question regards to the uniform and I'd like to ask to Chief Jepson about that where. Um, what are the process? Uh, and then what are you thinking regards to it and can it be done? Um. Um, before the school starts, uh, what's your plan?
Yeah, thank you councillor Kimmy. Um, that's already in process. I mean, we just have to get those, those uniforms ordered. Um, basically they will look very uh, similar to the bike officer uniforms like we've touched on before. Uh, bright blue polo, um, a straight pant as opposed to a more BDU style pant. Um, that will basically look very, very similar to what our bike officers wear. Obviously our bike officers wear shorts. Uh, we're not going to be asking our youth services officers to be wearing shorts.
Yeah. Uh, another follow up is that regards to concealed weapon, there were some questions I've asked about why, why don't we have concealed weapon rather than. Gun showing and what is your thought on that?
Well, it's, it's a multiple, multiple faceted question, um, primarily because they are first responders. And because they aren't only responding uh, inside the schools, they also jurisdictionally will respond to other calls for service. Um, WACA, our dispatch center will GPS dispatch individuals uh, on patrol to a call. And if one of our youth services officers happens to be in proximity of that neighborhood or somewhere where something is happening in distress. Um, our officers need to be uniformed and equipped. To the, to the point where they can effectively do their job. The other piece of that really comes down to training. I touched on this on June twentieth as it relates to rigorous training and muscle memory. Um, fine motor skills and things of that nature that goes into uh, police work. And anytime you have, um, you know, someone out in the field that's doing a job that. Requires critical thinking and rapid evolving situations. I want my officers to be able to rely on that training and that muscle memory. And so moving their gear around and having them wear equipment in different places at different times. Uh, becomes very challenging and can be very dangerous for officers and the community, quite honestly.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, um, that gives me a quite a bit of perspective. Um, one, one more question to um, to the superintendent and deputy superintendent. Regards to the uh, office for officers or room, um, and you, you mentioned about their sensitive issues that we have to talk about. I just want to uh, listen to more about your thoughts where why couldn't it be done at principal's office or, or vice principal's office or school office? And is it really safe? It feels safe with a separate room for asking questions or deputies? Or the SROs to be there?
Well, those offices that you're mentioning, the administrative offices are typically functional for those administrators. And so they are conducting meetings not only with staff, but also students and parents throughout the course of the day. Um, so that can happen at any point in time. In terms of access uh, to students. Primarily it's about students being able to do a drop in if they so choose. Um, or if there's an investigation, as I had mentioned, that's very specific. And then they do need to pull a student in. They may be acting on behalf of DHS or an investigation from law enforcement or juvenile um, to assist in that capacity. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Well, one last questions. I don't know who to a, ask to um. How often as SOR, SR officer that you're called uh, and respond to the call rather than. A student approaching you and ask questions and ask an advice. It's more prevalent that the teachers call you, or is it more prevalent that, that students will ask an approach for their advice or assistance?
Go ahead, Captain Master Polito.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to that. So part of our new reporting is actually going to begin to capture that bigger component. Um. Uh, the vast majority of calls we get come from uh, the administrators. Um, but also begin to capture if it's coming from a student to the administrator or if it's a parent to the administrator, then to us. So our main goal, one of our goals in, in the reporting is to really dig down on that information of the twenty-five hundred plus calls we got. Where were they driving? Was it parents? Was it kids? Was it teachers? Was it, you know, lawn staff? So that's our long term goal because. We want to know as well. And currently the system doesn't provide that deep of a dive, but I'm hopeful that by the end of this next school year, we've got all that.
Okay, sorry, I just remember one last question to uh, to uh, our city manager. Um, I know councillor Hassan mentioned that many of the sea change uh, recommendations were not incorporated into the IGA. Or wasn't, wasn't clear, but my impression is that many of them are incorporated. Is there a mix up or am I missing something or, or is that, I need some clarity regards to that?
Um, I would want to refer to the district since they had a re, review and response report. In which they responded to each of the recommendations and majority of the recommendations are reflected in the IGA. I think that there's concern on that the language isn't as clear or maybe there needs to be more explanation. So um, I also want to keep in mind before I turn it over to the district to respond is that, again, this is, this is a service agreement. Um, and there's also an importance to maintain as much flexibility as possible, um, and not, no pun intended handcuff either agency. Because um, people do need to pivot, um, but I also hear that there are issues around trust and confusion as well. So that, that does make it more difficult. So um, either superintendent or assistant superintendent can weigh in on that.
So councillor Kimmy, um, we would agree that our, our perspective is the majority of what C change has recommended. Um, working closely with the chief in looking at those recommendations and we did a review and process um, with our own. Um, school board back in January and we do believe that those are incorporated in the overall IGA.
All right, thank you. That's all for me.
All right, new rule councillor Kimmy, you can't just say one more question and ask seven. So just say you got a lot of questions up from the job. We're okay with it. Councillor Teeter.
Yeah, thank you both for being with us here tonight. I've got a few, one of them is a follow up to a question councillor Kimmy asked about office space. Um, what is this, what's the scenario like if there is not office space for YSO on campus?
I think that.
Yes, please.
Um, and, and I touched on this back on June twentieth. I mean, primarily it's an interface. And it, it provides opportunity for interface and to have them, have an office and have space within the school makes them. A part of that school. And the one thing that I don't want this to turn into is a response only model. Where the only thing we do is respond. In order for us to develop relationships and be in a space where we can do that. Um, we need to be in the schools and not just be responding anytime we're called for a problem. Um, and a, as someone alluded to earlier, there is, and I can't speak to this. I've never been an SRO or youth services officer. But I've heard enough of them talk about the constant interface they have with the students all day long throughout the school day. And uh, and I understand that we have a section of our community that is uncomfortable with our police officers in those schools. However, I also know that there's a large majority of those students that seem to have very positive relationships with our officers. And I don't want to take that away. And I want to try to capture a bridge, if you will, for us to get into the space where it becomes more difficult. And create those relationships. And so um, that's why I believe it's important for us to have those spaces in the schools. Uh, Dr. Mead already touched on investigative aspects of it and the reach out aspect of it. Um, but I wanted to, to share that with you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, that answered that question. And then is it possible to give an estimate of how much time? A YSO is spending at school versus doing standard patrol? Or is like, is a portion of their day maybe?
Well, their primary assignment during the school year is to be uh, assigned to the schools and responsive to the school district. Um, I, I don't know that I could quantitate that, but maybe cap, captain master Polito could uh, do a better job of that than I can.
Great.
Yeah, I would, I mean, the, the vast majority of their time is at the schools. I mean, so if an officer is going from school A to school B and there's a call for service, they'll divert. But what the nice thing that the youth services have is they're not assigned to patrol districts. So dispatch isn't sending them calls for service throughout the day. So I mean, Beaverton has seventy-five to eighty thousand calls roughly in a year. Patrol officers are responding from call to call to call, triaging if you would. The YSOs being unplugged from this have time to spend at the schools. Um, and that's what they do. They take the time that needed for these delicate cases. But while they're going from school to school, there is the opportunity to dispatch, seeing where they're at, could send them to a CPR call or a Bergen progress. Or a criminal misdemeanor occurring. Like if you're higher priority ones and twos. Um, I can get into their CADs and actually get you a number. I don't have those available to me, but I can get you a number of calls for service. And then what they did at the schools versus what's not. I would, during the school year, ninety percent or greater at the schools.
Okay. Um, yeah, thank you. And I, I don't need precise data right now, but the estimate and description helps them. Um, I think as part of reporting, it would be interesting to see some of that data um, in the future. And then a couple of other questions. One of them was about um. Section three point one point six in the IGA. It says make appropriate contacts with parents or uh, and other community agencies as requested by the district. Or at the discretion of the YSO. And I'm curious about what that contact with community organizations would look like if it's at the discretion of the YSO. What situations is that?
Sure. So some calls go to DHS, we forward to, some calls will go forward to the Washington Juvenile. Um, occasionally we forward calls to Washington County Mental Health. Uh, we contact the parents. So those are community partners uh, that we deal with on a regular basis. Uh, it could be, it could be a, a juvenile probation if a student is in the system and there's a, there's a checking component. Uh, that they want us to inform them on.
Okay, that's helpful. I was reading that and I didn't know if that meant like DHS or if it meant places of worship? Or what sorts of community organizations? So.
It would do, it would be the, the public agencies that are involved in, in youth services around the county.
Okay, great. Thank you. That, that's helpful. Um, and then number three point one point eight says conduct motorized and foot patrol of school grounds and nearby streets. Um, and direction of traffic at designated points. Um, I assume this is just. Uh, standard walking around and keeping an eye on kids or what's happening in school. Can you talk more about what that actually entails?
Sure, the officers, uh, in addition to, to being on campus, they're, they're around the campuses. Um, our kids are there. We'd often deal with parental custody issues, um, stalking issues, no contact orders. Um, so it, it, it's important for us to make sure that the perimeters of the schools um, are safe. The kids are coming and going either to lunch or from, you know, who's, who's leaving at different times of the day. So we make sure the area is safe. Some of the patrols we do are uh, parent drop offs. The kids kind of commotion, especially some of the schools. Uh, Nancy Riles, for example, off of one sixtieth is a very tight in and out. So we've had our officer up there to kind of just help navigate and educate parents on the pickup and drop off. Because we've got kids moving and they're small and there's no room for error. Um, we'll do the school bus stops to make sure that the cars are stopping when the buses are flashing their, their red lights. Again. Uh, valuable commodity, right? There's no room for error. So our big goal is safety of the kids and how we compromise that is that holistic approach, not just on campus, but. Uh, the bigger, bigger picture.
Okay, great. Thank you. And um, that's all my questions. I will say, I think part of the challenge that I'm having is that I have a. I think I've got a different value set for how policing in schools should work or how I'd like to see it work. Where I do lean more towards, please do really well with emergency response and I would love to see them focus on that. And so I'm not a huge supporter of having office space, um, designated office space in the schools. Um, so I think I would like to see that changed. I do agree that with a lot of my fellow councillors, with a lot of the concerns and comments they've shared. So um, I appreciate the answers we've gotten. It's helped give me some clarity too.
Councillor Tibnon.
Thank you.
We can't hear you, councillor Tibnon.
This has been the most technologically challenging meeting I've ever been in for me personally. Um. Most of the questions I had were answered already. So I, the last one on my list that was not touched on yet. is about the school board. So we've heard from a lot of folks in the community, um, and and some have made the statement that the school board didn't get to have time with this, didn't get to inform the IGA. Uh, didn't know what they were voting for. And my limited understanding of it just goes back to the work that I did with a a couple of individual schoolwork um, members. And former counselor Sansusi, when we helped draft the RFP that eventually led to us hiring the consultant C change. Um, so they were involved then. And there was also um, an opportunity for other counselors at the city as well as board members at the school to inform the draft of the RFP. So they were involved at that level of procuring the consultant. Um, can you? Can you shed some light on what the board's involvement has been since then in drafting this our uh, IGA?
The board was not directly involved in the in uh, the draft of the IGA. That is not a board purview. IGAs are authorized by the superintendent, unlike the city where IGAs come forward to the city council. They do not go to the school board. Uh, the involvement of the school board was simply a financial one because it exceeded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But the city, but the but the school board has been at the breast of the the C change report and implementation of what we're doing for the last two years. I inherited this middle of the run per se. And we've had a lot of communication with the with the with with the previous board. I know there's a change in the board right now. We welcome today, right before this meeting, we had a board meeting, welcome three D board members. So again, um, we'll continue that dialogue in terms of the implementation of our current model.
Yeah, I just, I want to just interject for one quick second. I that kind of made it seem like this in Dr. Mead, I know you're very direct and I'm very similar, but that that made it seem like the school board had no idea what you guys are doing, which I had talked to almost all of them. That is completely like, I just want to make sure the community knows the school board was not aloof in this decision making and you guys were out running around doing what you want. Like they direct your work at the IGA, which is a little bit different than what we're talking about, but I just want to make sure that it doesn't feel like the school board had no part of this decision making. Can you guys clarify a little bit there?
I can, I can clarify that the board um, had a lot of interactions regarding the implement, the the recommendations and what we were doing. So the staff kept the board abreast in terms of what what was happening throughout the 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 whole C change report um, process and this past year in terms of what we were planning on doing.
Okay. Yeah, this has been a learning curve for me. I I I, you know, I had, I made the lazy assumption that they function the exact same way that we did, but that I also I learned a lot once I got elected into this role of how it actually worked, which I think is the experience of most counselors that get elected as you see the tip of the iceberg, not the whole thing. Um, that that was what I was wondering is I I I think that oh, especially our community members that aren't familiar with the behind the curtain mechanisms of how these things get done and how policy gets written or how IGAs get written is the conversations and and the work that goes into them and the protocols and processes that are guide the work. And it's been a learning curve for me as well. And so I I think I just, I need to be equipped with understanding um, the what role they played in this and uh, and also the the feedback mechanisms for you to help help uh, give you a sense of where they are with this and not that they are in charge of it, but what you know, what what part do they play in all this? Because just as a voter, when I go to fill out my ballot, a lot of people that run for school board say things about school resource officers and they say things about mental health support in schools and programmatic elements that um, I'm like, well, now I'm wondering if they actually even do have uh, authority around those issues or not. So um, just just as as much clarity as possible on on the temperature of the board, I think it's helpful for us, but especially helpful for the folks that are tuning in. So um, if there's anything you want to add here, please do. I have one more thing as well.
Yes, Counselor Tibnan, thank you. Um, and Mayor Beatty, you know me, you know me well. Uh, I am direct. So my directness was simply about the official capacity of our school board. We spent nearly two and a half, almost three hours with our school board in January where we were going through recommendations from C change. Um, the chief sat there with us for the duration of that. I had multiple staff members involved from our BH and W team, behavioral health and wellness team. To be able to address concerns that came forward from C change. And also we took input from our school board during that meeting. Um, and there's been several follow up conversations that have happened with school board members individually with us as staff as well, um, as we've continued to move forward. So my response was just in their official capacity, but there's a lot of input that is always received by our school board members. They're heavily involved in our decisions, um, and rightfully so. They they set our policies and they absolutely want the very best for our kids.
And council member, they they have uh, made it a priority for us to focus on the mental health and wellbeing of our kids and such have really supported the behavior, health and wellness teams. And the funding for that, even though again, we're losing federal funding, we're trying to seek other funds to keep continue with that supportive resource for our kids K through twelve.
I I could talk all night about that particular subject, but I think it's atrocious that we're, you know, still in this situation where it's not at the federal and state level been figured out on how to support schools in this regard. I also think that we need to get a little more um, definition around the term mental health. I'm hearing that a lot in these conversations and in a lot of conversations that is so broad. It's it's hard to wrap your head around exactly what that means or even how to begin tackling it. I'd love to know more prescriptively what exactly does that mean when we talk about it, but that is a conversation for a different night, maybe over coffee sometime. Um, but I just, I didn't print it out. Um, but for those on the call in any capacity you're in, there was a document given to us that has been extremely helpful to read through, which is the School Resource Officer Program Review Response Report, which is a long name. That's what it looks like. Of the agenda bill, it's available on our website. If you click on the agenda from the website for tonight's meeting, you'll see hyperlinks within it. If you go to the agenda bill for this topic, it's got everything in there. It's got what we're talking about right now. It's has the IGA and it has this report after it. And it gives an a breakdown of every single C change recommendation and the school's response to it, which for me was extremely helpful to see that and and greatly informed my understanding of the thoughts and rationale and logic that went into your decision making. So I wanted to flag that for people. On that note, I don't have any more particular questions, so I think I'll save the rest of my thoughts and feelings about this for when we get to a motion um, and and allow others to chime in.
Uh, I'm gonna let the council president go before a second time, Counselor Hassan. Council President.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of specific questions as I was going through and comparing the report that Counselor Tibnan just um, mentioned against the IGA. Um, and one of them was in um, package two A, recommendation five. Um, the C change recommendation is about narrowing or prohibiting the use of disorderly conduct as a charge for student behavior when no other crime is alleged or committed. Um, and it's specifically there to reduce reliance on um, individual discretion. And so it says this should be specifically documented in the IGA. And I didn't really find that one outlined. Like I was looking at three dot two dot four. But I wasn't sure if that was like meant to address that one or not, but just because C change did ask us to specifically talk about disorderly conduct as a charge here, and I didn't really think that we had done that through the IGA and and perhaps I know that one of the things I've been learning a lot through this process is what's appropriate to go in the IGA versus something else. And there may even be of other governing documents that that apply, right? Which may mean why we don't. And so I'm, if this is one of those reasons, I'm happy to be corrected. But that was one that I was curious why it didn't end up in the IGA.
If that one question was directed to me, my sincere apologies. Our alarm company called and I had to step away for a moment. School district alarm company.
Oh, okay. Hopefully everything's okay. Hopefully the phone needs to respond. They're available to get there. Um, yeah, Chief, if you want to answer, and if I if it's helpful for me to make a truncated version of the question, I can.
I'm gonna try to answer it and I may not get it correct, but in the IGA, it actually references the code of conduct in which we will be called by the school district and that is not one of the crimes for within the code of conduct.
Okay. Yeah, so Carl, my question was in the um, in section or package two A, recommendation five. It talks about um, to narrow the use of disorderly conduct as a charge for student behavior. And I just hadn't noticed it in IGA. So Chief's saying because this is actually not one of the things that in the code of conduct we respond to is why it's not in IGA.
That's correct.
Well, it technically is in the IGA because it's referenced within the IGA like uh, like our city attorney mentioned it. Um, IGA will like reference articles or policies or things of that nature. It doesn't have the entire content. And so that would be one of, one of those examples.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, okay. And so we have touched on this one a little bit, but I wanted to just like further elaborate. So um, we've talked about the different reporting and how things will be tracked. But I'm curious, so since and I I was really helpful to kind of see the those code breakdowns to see like what the numbers that are included now and what are not included um, in like how the district will be bringing um, YSOs in. I think it's one of the tables in the in the package, but um, for the things that should no longer require consultation with an SRO, is there like a uh, a revision to the training that you're doing with your admins to make sure that they know that those things are no longer reasons to call the YSOs?
That's a great question and thank you for asking. So last year when we did this uh, revision, we actually did go over the new code of conduct and the changes that were made in that last summer. We will do the same thing again at the start of this school year as we continue to have administration changes every year. And we want to make sure that everybody's got the most up to date information.
Okay, yeah, I think um, there, you know, a couple of my fellow counselors, maybe all of them at this might have said how important like that reporting mechanism is. And in the in the C change recommendations, they have recommended monthly, but then we did land on um, twice a year in the IGA. Um, it sounds like there's definitely an openness and a willingness to report more regularly, even having the dashboard that's kind of accessible at all times. Um, I definitely think, and it sounds like that specific thing, like what how and why calls are made and whatnot will be um, something that's reported on, but I think especially for those moments, knowing that like annual start of school year training is so so important, but I know about when I go through training programs, I'm receiving a lot of information. And so hoping we can use the the reporting mechanism as like that follow up training mechanism them to, right? To be like, hey, let's refresh on the fact that these are the types of calls we shouldn't be making anymore and um, yeah, so just I guess just a point on that. And I'm sorry, I have a headache and I'm having a hard time articulating my words right now. Um, I think there have been a lot of really, really good questions. I think for me, I was definitely feeling, you know, at first read also feeling like maybe not a lot of these changes are reflected here. And so I do appreciate the time that staff on both the city and the school board or on the school district side have gone through to show us where all those are. And I did a lot of that markup myself because I just, it was helpful for me to go through that exercise and and gut check myself on like what's here and what's not here. Um, and I've also done, you know, my homework and watching your work session from January and seeing that school board did have that chance to weigh in and um, you know, hearing from our chief and and members of the of the team. So I guess my my final um, question is just a little bit more of that procedural one. Um, and s- and so as Mayor Beatty stated, right, the seven of us cannot negotiate the IGA. This is something where together we would maybe discuss the if we have amendments that we want to bring forward that then city manager would bring them to you and this this process will just take a bit longer for us to conclude. Okay.
Counselor Hassan.
Thanks. Uh, I have three more questions and then I have potentially a path forward. We'll see. Um, the first question, I know we talked a little bit about school board. Is it safe to assume that the newly, the new school board has not waited on this H IGA?
That is correct.
Thank you. Um, can you talk to me a little bit about what campus monitors do versus uh, youth service officers?
Yes, campus monitors are district employees. Uh, they are not deputized by, they're not part of law enforcement. They are a district employee and serve at the discretion of the administration of those buildings primarily at the secondary level. And it is about keeping order in the hallways, making sure kids are in class, um, not leaving campus, those types of things. So they're just helping to helping our administration, shall we say, in the course of the day is uh, many times administrators are involved in a variety of things. And do not have the ability to be out and about of the school on a regular basis, or as often as our campus supervisors.
Is there clarity around the difference between a campus monitor and a uh, what a youth service officer does? Is it different enough? Is it? I'm just curious for the public.
Absolutely. There's a job description for our side in terms of campus supervisors, their duties and responsibilities.
Okay, um, there is one thing. I pulled up the code of conduct. Um, uh, Dr. Mead, you said uh, code five bullying. Um, it does say could maybe reported to the SRO of the involved school. Do you like maybe a comment on that? Cause that was kind of different than what you told me, page twelve of the student contact. Sorry, page eleven. Page twelve, reports of bullying as defined in the handbook may be reported to the SRO of the involved school. That's what it says under bullying.
Okay. Uh, so May is permissive, obviously. Um, if in fact it rises to that level in which it's of that serious nature, um, it's got, it's a discretion at the billing level in administration to make that decision.
So I mean, you have to know, I get nervous when we say May, because that feels very discretionary. And I don't want a principal at one school and a principal at a different school to maybe make a decision. Cause this, some of the decisions that we're making, I mean, let's be very real, especially in schools are impacting the future of students' lives. So I have a couple like um, uh, Bill, would you please join us? I would love like phone a city attorney section of this.
Uh, hold on a second, Counselor Hassan. Are you going into negotiations in the IGA? Cause we need to do some procedural things first.
That's what I'm asking him to do.
Okay, well, that's my job to do that. So what we, what I want uh, to know is are you done with your questions or because we're gonna move to the next section?
So I have my comments on what I want to see done or happen. And so I guess you maybe, do you want to hear those first? Do you want to go to Bill? What's, what do you, what's your flavor?
Yeah, I don't think Bill is, needs to be in this just yet. I think we're gonna kind of try to wrap our mind around the direction we're going. If there's more questions you need around uh, from the staff, this would be the time for that.
Uh, no, I'm in a place of like, here's what I want to see happen. And so and to hear whether how other counselors feel. So is this the time for that? Or would you like to do more procedural stuff first?
We need to get around the idea um, a little bit from the council. If we are in the place where we want to have some changes or do we want to move forward? And so the way that we would do that is a motion and then have discussion and then we could direct out of that.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and start with my comments for the council and y'all can weigh in. Um, the first thing that I would just like to generally see is an opening statement about what this partnership means. I think belong, believe, achieve is a big part of the school district. So um, I'm gonna take a moment to read a section from the Hillsborough IGA. For those of you who are listening, I did um, you know, suggest revisions to the city manager. It wasn't um, something that could be shared, I guess. And so this is the only forum for me to share where where I was going. So um, this is a section from the Hillsborough IGA. SROs are not school disciplinarians and violations of the student code of conduct or school rules that are not violations of law should always be handled by school faculty and staff, not SROs. SROs should not directly intervene unless the situation is a direct threat to the health, safety and security of the student or another person in the school or is required by law and will employ de-escalation techniques as appropriate. School discipline is the responsibility of the appropriate school administrator. Clear district guidelines on SR involvement will be developed and distributed to school staff with a copy of guidelines provided to the SROs. Revisions will be mutually agreed upon by Hillsborough and the city. The SRO will report school policy violations through proper channels to be handled by school administration. It is a responsibility of the SRO to become familiar with the student handbook and student code of conduct, but is not the responsibility of the SRO to enforce the rules in these documents. I really liked that language. I took it straight from the Hillsborough. I'd like to see that. Removing, so if you want to pull up your IGA and go to page two, I'm struggling with three point one point three. And Counselor Kimmy, your question was perfect cause you were like, C change recommendations, we made them, we didn't. Three point one point three to me is the antithesis of the recommendations. Three point one point three talks about sharing educational Is the antithesis of the recommendations, three point one point three talks about sharing educational resources for instructional programs. I'm not an expert, I believe C change was the expert, I believe that C change would think that three point one point three needs to be removed. So that's one thing, um in three point two point one one, I'd like us to specifically put, I'll give you a minute if you want to find that. Um, the monthly reporting, I'd like us to identify race, ethnicity and sex in the language. Four point one point one, which is the designated office at each high school. Again, I believe C change was the expert in that and did a comprehensive review to make this decision. And I believe that that's what that purpose of that report was. Um, and I don't think this has to be, uh well, I know training is something that Counselor Duggar and and a couple of us have talked about. Um, the other piece that I don't need to see in an I G A, but I really want to say is um the. The C change report suggested a multi stakeholder agency task force or group to address these situations. And to Counselor Tivnan's point, there is a mental health crisis, right, like kids have, there was COVID, there was loneliness, there's isolation. There are kids that are making really bad choices, kids who are making bad choices should not be criminalized. I'm not saying that our police are doing that, but by putting police in schools, we do risk that happening. And I do think it's our duty to take a moment and say, what are we doing to help these kids feel included, belong and and direct them towards better choices? I know that there's a lot of conversations around restorative justice happening in Beaverton schools. I I just, I want to make sure that we're continuing to talk about that, so those are like probably some of my non-negotiables, thank you for listening.
Okay, so where I think we need to go right now is move towards um. What I've not heard from anyone is that they want to outright object uh to the uh document. Potentially Counselor Duggar, that was some of the language you were using. Um, but again, I think you might have been getting in the weeds, and so uh what I need from you right now is what did you want to see changed? You want to den- what I have written down here is a dented language, what specifically? You had a lot of statements, but not a lot of questions.
I've been working on that, so uh I actually agree with C- Counselor Hudson on code five of the uh the bullying language. Uh, I I I don't like the May, I I think we need to get better clarification on that.
But wait, so, hold on, can we get some clarification? Do we have a juris- that is in the the their handbook? We cannot direct them to change that, and so how does that intersect with the I G A is the question we need to ask.
Let me think about that.
Because the school district needs their ability to do things the way they want to do it, it's not, we cannot say you should change this language in their handbook. So think about what we can impact in this agreement.
Let me think about that, uh my biggest concern remains with three point eight point two, uh the training language, I would love to see us. Outline specifically what their training plan and how they're gonna hold themselves accountable. Uh, it doesn't need to be overly complicated, I understand the the uh the need for flexibility. I think Jenny made a great point about that, but what we have in there. I do contracting for a living, just doesn't, I mean, it it might as well not even be in there, and I feel like we need clarification on that. Uh, so that's number one, number two, um indemnification, this might be an ask. That ha- we have to pun on. Because it's probably a lawyer to lawyer question, but I feel like we are leaving ourselves at. Particularly for an improper request for a Y S O intervention. I feel like we are leaving the city at legal risk. Be- because our officers are not going to say no, they're gonna do what the school district says, right, even though it outlines. Uh, and if something in in and if someone is harmed, like I just want our lawyers. To maybe work on that language a little bit, along with B S D's lawyers to to clarify that, if see if we can come up with agreement there. Uh, let me see if there was other ones, and then um I agree with with Counselor Hudson, and I believe uh Counselor. Art Mar Prig mentioned it, like uh the the multi stakeholder group, uh particularly around recommendations. Around that prohibiting the use of disorderly conduct, I don't know if that belongs in the. The I G A, but that is very high on my list because it was called out by not only C change, but I believe the Black Parent Union and a couple others. And I I think that makes a lot of sense, and I want to make sure we operationalize that somehow, so. Normally, I would say it doesn't need, you know, maybe we could throw it in somewhere else, but section ten point one again says. There are no promises other than this agreement that we will hold ourselves accountable to, and so part of me is like, if we don't put it in here. Then we're going on faith, and I think I think I'm not sure that I can go on. Faith with that one, so those are the three things that will get me to a yes.
Okay, well, I don't know if we're gonna get you to the indemnification language because we are at equal risk if a patrol officer shows up. I don't think the school, I I'm not a lawyer for the school district, but I highly doubt they're gonna say yes, absolve the city of all responsibility all the time. So what is the most important in that to you? Because this is nitty gritty, and I don't think our insurance is going to allow it. I just think that's, I think you might be, my personal opinion is this might be an unreasonable request for this I G A, but I'm happy to hear from other people. Um, if that's a nonstarter for you, I don't, we're not gonna get there tonight.
It's not a nonstarter tonight, I I I would like lame. Maybe this was, maybe this was one of the exceptions that I can go on faith is like a good. Uh, a good faith conversation between B S D's lawyers and our lawyers on that. Uh, and maybe that can be an amendment for a future if we can agree to something. I just want to go on record as saying like, it feels like we are taking on unnecessary risks there. I'm not a lawyer, though, so I can, you know, if if Bill signs off on it, I can live with it. Uh, or or obviously the the city attorney's staff. But I I would, I just want a conversation between our lawyers and theirs, and I'm willing, this is the one I'm willing to go on faith. Like if people say, we'll get them together for a phone call, and I can move forward.
Does anyone else on council have strong opinions about this before, because he he doesn't have the authority to direct them, but if four of you want this, I'll I'll put it in this right now. Can we speak up on this topic? I'm sorry, John, I don't see four people with you here.
Okay, well, I went on public record, like I I this was a concern of mine.
Council president, was there anything in particular, you had a lot of your questions answered?
Yeah.
Is there anything not on this list that you currently need?
Uh, no, the reporting, I think in the that checking mechanism, uh that one I think is really like the biggest one, um for me. Yes.
Counselor Kimmy, anything in particular? I didn't, I didn't have anything written down for you, I think your questions were answered, but this is your opportunity.
Right, um. I like Counselor Hassan's initial statement regards to the Hillsborough, I think that kind of clearly um. Uh, tells the responsibilities and expectation from uh Y S O and the school district. And I I'll I'll for the future of obviously, I want to see more clear data. Of who called, what initiated, and what action was taken, and race, ethnicity. Sex, uh all that to be included somehow, if possible. Uh, I don't know how I'm gonna word that in there, but that's what I want to see.
Okay, Counselor Teeter, is there anything in this the list that's been given? Is there anything additional?
Uh, my biggest is section four point one point one that talks about providing Y S O with designated office space on school grounds.
Counselor Tivnan?
Sorry, Counselor.
You need to get you one of those Gen Z'ers to help you out.
I T and help me fix this tomorrow morning. Um, Counselor Teeter, I apologize, but I'm in uh diametric opposition to what you just said, and the reason why is twofold. Sorry, I know, speaking out of school is really, really late, um. Uh, okay, personal anecdote first, in high school, uh there was an incident in a classroom, teacher. Caused an injury to me, and I ended up in one of those offices speaking to an officer about it. And I I was very grateful for that room. And to um I believe it was the superintendent's pointer, m- maybe it was um. Dr. Mead, uh there was a hustle and bustle in the front office going on. And I I vividly remember the principal's door being closed because he was also in a meeting, because I had to wait to speak to him. So I I really appreciated being able to talk to the officer in the immediacy of the aftermath, and so I understand. The value of that room. Um, the other part of it is the recommendations that C change made did not include saying that. S R O officers should not have offices in um the in the district. That was mentioned in a paragraph in the executive summary, and I did a search for it throughout the rest of their report, and it wasn't mentioned again. It was this offhand remark that wasn't backed up by any data, any any um case studies, nothing. So I I can't, I can't put any validity to to that statement of what their arguments would have been. For why not to do it, other than it seems like it was one person's opinion who was helping to write the executive summary that put that in there. Uh, and because there's an absence of that, I just, I am because it did not make it into the actual recommendations, I don't give it. As much weight um as I've heard others giving it, uh so that's. That's, that would be my counter to it of why I would, I would like to see it remain, um. And uh, yeah, that's it, and I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, so what I'm gonna try to do is get us to where we're at on some of these, there's some of these I think we have mutual agreement on. The space one, it's one I do not think, and so I I am with um. Counselor Tivnan here, and I I. I don't want to overshare with personal experiences because that's challenging, but uh you know, through my military experience and in the schools at school-based health centers. I've dealt with a lot of sexual violence, and having identified space to deal with that is incredibly important. We also had an incident with my daughter with an issue with the gun at her school this year that centered around our family. And having space to have those conversations with the S R O uh was incredibly important. Um, I tend to want to lead with the chief's recommendation here as well. I also don't know if we have the ability to tell the school that the officers can't have a space, so I don't know. I kind of need you guys to wait, like Jenny and Dr. Valderras to weigh in on this, I don't know, do we? I don't feel like we have the authority to direct the school district to not have space for officers, that feels out of our ability. Do any of you guys have an opinion?
Want to to understand the rationale to the why again, in terms of because our officers are on campus. And I think it's uh the the it's it's their, they're they're walking the hallways, and uh. As the chief mentioned earlier, to try and be part of the campus, be part of the school community, which S R Os are. I I I know when I was in Hillsborough, I for the twenty years I was there, you know, our our S R Os were part of the. Of the staff, for the most part, they they got to know the staff, they got to know the kids pretty well, and then and I think that's, I concur with the chief in terms of the rationale to why. Now, if it if the council was adamant not to have them, of course, we would go back and work with the chief and city manager to. To to make some adjustments.
Okay, so I need to to hear from you guys, John, what's your opinion about? Space.
Uh, I I prefer them to have space.
Counselor Teeter, we heard from you on this, Counselor Hassan, your opinion is uh no office space?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so the recommendation from C change was police will not maintain desk space at schools. And in the I G A, they're just being provided an office, so I also just office desk space, but I'm a no, I don't, I support the C change recommendations.
Counselor Kimmy.
I'm I'm yes for the rooms because um school wants it, chief thinks it's a good idea, and I think um. It was a good idea for um somebody who's new from other country come here. And they don't want to be questioned when everybody's watching, it's kind of embarrassing. So I I think that safe space is good, if it's even it needs to happen, it's a sensitive situation.
Okay, uh, there's not a council majority on that, so we're gonna move to our our other topics where I think we have agreement. Uh, I personally like the Hillsborough language along with Counselor Hassan, um, do we have? How does the rest of the council feel?
On the, that's on the opening statement?
Opening statement?
Yes, agreed.
Okay, so uh city manager, we would like uh that statement added to our I G A.
Yeah.
Uh, on our behalf, um, I think we also have um. A lot of agreement around reporting, around race, ethnicity, sex, was there anything else, Counselor Hassan? Those are the three I wrote down.
Three point one point three.
I know, but I'm asking, was there more than those three things?
Three point, that's a different thing.
I'm talking about reporting, you wanted race, ethnicity, sex.
Yes, that's, that's, I can add, um, I've seen the reporting before, Dr. Valderras, I know that in the past you've had. Special um economically disadvantaged students included and special ed and five oh four, so if there's a way to keep that, that'd be great, but it doesn't have to be written.
Sorry for inter- i- if we could.
Go ahead.
I know data on L G B T Q students is difficult because it's self-reported, but if if there's any that we can have. I'm really sensitive to the needs of those students, uh and if and if and if that can be added, if it's the data is available. If it is not, I understand that, but if it if it can be added and it's available, I would like to see it.
Is it available? Could we add it, Dr. Mead, Dr. Valderras?
We could check with staff on that, like to to your point, Councilman, it's it's sometimes gets a little bit tricky, but I can definitely check with our I T staff.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Valderras, I can tell you, we don't capture that information currently in synergy, it's all self-reported by individual students. Potentially through a relationship of a counselor or a specific staff member that they've got a relationship.
Yeah, I know that's the same with a lot of our companies as well, so. Uh, I'm I'm okay with not including that, but if we if directionally, if we ever get that capability, I'd like to see it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we also want reporting back to the city council annually. Um, and I think for us in that, we want the the status of training for teachers and admin for service calls. We want it broadened beyond administration, we want it to also be uh teachers, is that acceptable from your guys' perspective?
At the present time, we do direct instruction, shall we say, professional development with our administration, we don't do the direct with um. Our teachers is or staff of nearly five thousand, so that is something I need to give some thought to, I I'm not opposed to it, I just need to. To figure that out.
Okay, and that that's something that probably would not belong in an I G A because I feel like that could change over time, so I think we we want. The I G A, and then I think city manager, we're talking a little bit with some issues around an M O U, because M O Us could. Change in the future, once everyone's trained or something of that nature, and so I understand it doesn't exist now. We we want something around that, and I think we you need to come back to tell us, it's not in our jurisdiction to tell you what to do. We just want to know that teachers have some degree of understanding around S R Os, Counselor Hassan.
Uh, I don't think that this is, needs to be in the I G A, but Dr. Mead, it would be all staff, right? Any uh receptionist, a front office desk person, and in instruction, right, like it should be any and all folks at least have a protocol and or understanding for rules of engagement.
Absolutely, agreed, agreed, yes.
Okay. And then I think the one outstanding thing we have is the disorderly conduct, and I'm not sure sure exactly what the ask is from the council. Council president, I believe this was from you.
Well, yeah, I I I think I, I think it's covered because the. I G A talks, does reference the school code of conduct, right, and the school code of conduct outlined the thing, so I felt like it was a not. Responsive to the C change report, but it's, it is kind of, when you follow the chain, right? So I don't think I need something specifically on there because the code of conduct really does. Help fill in the gap of why calls are made, right, it says, these are the things, so I I'm I'm com- I'm comfortable with that. Explanation.
I brought this up too, and I'm okay with it not being in the I G A as long as it's in an M O U, but. Uh, I think the Black Parent Union, I I hope I'm getting that right, it might have been another stakeholder group. Called for uh. A stake, a multi stakeholder group to make recommendations narrowing or particular prohibiting the use. Of disorderly conduct as a charge for student behavior when no other crime uh is alleged, and and I think, I think that's a. I think a multi stakeholder group to address that isn't too much to ask for. I think a multi-stakeholder group to address that isn't too much to ask for. And I, I'm okay with it being in the MOU. But there is implicit bias and things like that. We're all, we're all guilty of that. It's not just a police thing, right? And I, I, I think they've asked, that is a very reasonable ask. I'm okay with it being in the MOU, but I'd like to see it.
Okay, let me, let me put this back on us to think about this through the lens of what we can control. This is not an, a committee that would report to the city council and be making us recommendations. This would be squarely under Dr. Valderras's wheelhouse. And so I don't know if we have the ability to direct him to do this. Because the outcome of that is not the use of SROs. It's a school policy issue that we I just feel high, I feel very uncomfortable doing that because I don't think we have the jurisdiction and I don't think it involves our SROs. It's a policy decision from the school board. Do you guys feel differently about that? I'm trying to underst- trying to get to what you guys want, but I have a hard time with this one because it's not ours.
Uh, I don't disagree with you, Lacy. Uh, maybe, and maybe this is one of those things we just go on faith, like just ask our partners to, to convene this on behalf of, you know, and, and I'm not going to stop it based on it. Because I think you're correct. It is a school policy and I want to stay in my lane because I would get upset, you know, if people came to my lane, but it had, I've seen it was in C change and it was consistently asked by stakeholder groups. So I just, I think we gotta, I would encourage our partners to think about that at the very think long and hard because that one is difficult for me to swallow.
Well, I think that maybe perhaps the council can write a letter to the school board from us strongly encouraging it. And that might be a third thing that we're adding to what we're doing tonight. But I just don't feel like this is something we can do. Chief, you, you must feel differently. Your hand is up. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm want to make sure I understand um, what the point is of this. Because I think maybe this would be in our wheelhouse, or at least in, in ours from a policy standpoint. I- is what you're asking or is one of the recommendations that if, if we were to be involved in the incident and we were investigating something and the crime of disorderly conduct was in play, say that happened. That absent any other charge, that we wouldn't solely make a referral to the juvenile department or an arrest based solely on a disorderly conduct involved incident. Is that, is that what you're saying, counselor?
That's not the language.
But that's what I understand the ask is of the Black Parent Union.
Right. And, and I see the captains got on screen here too, so maybe we're thinking the same thing. Um, that could be something internally at the police department that I can direct. That our officers, they're always provided discretion and that absent additional charges that I could direct a command directive that absent additional charges, they will not solely make a charge to refer to the juvenile department on disorderly conduct alone. Is that what I'm hearing?
But what I was hearing from you guys, and so maybe we reframed to what the chief is saying. But what we were saying is the call initiated about disorderly conduct, which is generated from the school. What we're now talking about is the outcome once we get there. Those are, are desired change, what the chief is asking for?
I'm good with what the chief is asking for. I think that makes a lot of sense to me.
Counsel Hussin and Council President, you two also, this was something you both raised. So it's what the chief's saying, get to what you guys were asking for?
It does for me, yes.
Uh, i- i- if it helps, I've scoured three years worth of data and we've never responded to a disorderly conduct call at the schools. They, they haven't called it in. The only time I could see anything close, one time there was a fight at a low high school football game three years ago. Um, that had different kids fighting with each other. No one was arrested for disorderly conduct. It's just not a call that they respond for.
Well, they could, they could. So I think the council's trying to think about what might happen in the future as well. So I think I'm satisfied. I hear four other people saying they're satisfied that the chief will take that on as a, a policy of, under her ability to direct. So we could take that off the plate. That's going to be the chief's. Was there anything else, Counselor Hussin, in your list that I missed? I feel like there was, I wrote down everything, but I want to make sure.
This is going to be a bit controversial, so I'm happy to hear from Dr. Valderras and Dr. Mead. Three point one point three. It talks about an educational partnership. I'm not saying I don't support it. The C change report recommends otherwise. It literally says to limit the interaction. So it is against what the recommendations for which we paid quite a bit of money for. So can you help me understand why three point one point three is there? Because my gut is to remove it.
And I will share with you that it has been a regular occurrence for us to involve our partners. And it's not just law enforcement, it's our fire as well, um DHS, and it is part of our health classes at the high school level. Um, they come in as presenters and they're invited guests into our classrooms. And it's been a practice that we've had in place for years on end. Um, and it's, they touch on things um, within those, those health classes primarily at the high school. But again, they're invited guests based on uh, the instruction that's happening at the time.
Okay, I hear you. Officer Rose spoke to my business law class many, many years ago. The C change report is telling us to not do this. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around the difference. Because it's, it's trying to limit that role, Chief Johnson.
Uh, yeah, and I just, I, all due respect, C change is a recommendation. And so uh, I, I think there's other voices and professional opinions on the table outside of C change. And again, uh, our officers are in the schools to be a resource and to be of help. And as to uh, Dr. Mead's point, um interfacing with the kids in a positive environment is very helpful. There's other things that our uh, SROs, youth services officers do in the way of education around cyberbullying and things that are in their wheelhouse and their high discipline matters that are very intrinsic to law enforcement. And the education that is attached to that is why they're asked to be presenters in the schools on these subjects. And so um, again, with all due respect, that's, that's my opinion on it professionally.
Do we have any other strong opinions on this, this topic? Anyone, is there three other people to agree to remove it? Okay, I, I don't see a
Mayor, Mayor, can I chime in a little bit? Uh, is, is that something that could be included in some of their reporting? As far as the types of training or types of education services they're providing? Um, how many times they prevent, present and classes, what topics they cover, things like that?
I think we could direct it. We could direct the city manager to give us an annual reporting on that. I don't know because I don't think it needs to be in the IGA. Because we might, after we get a year, like our um generally how we've operated on this council is that particularly in the new form of government is we're, we're asking for reports to analyze where we are to make decisions to go forward. So I don't think I want to see it in the IGA. If that is important information for you to receive from a reporting, I would, I would support having that in the, in the city manager's data that she's already providing us. Is it, would that satisfy? I know it's not going to satisfy Counselor Hussin, but does that satisfy where you are?
I think seeing it in the, in the monthly or quarterly reporting would be, would be helpful. Um, because I, I lean towards where Counselor Hussin is, is speaking. Um but I would just, I would love some more information about it, I think.
Anyone else have any strong opinions on that?
I, I have one quick one. Um I think quick, and now I've got to think about it. I'm not in support of removing it. But I am so, in support of, and, and maybe this is a chief question. This is, this seems like a proxy for uh, for the relationship between the officers and the students, right? Like, like, at the end of the day, what I want to see is, are we making progress towards that, that marginalized group that feels scared, right? Like, that, that subset of BIPOC students and LGBTQ students, like wha- what this is for me is a proxy for the relationship building aspect. And that would challenge us. It doesn't need to be in the IGA, but I would challenge us to think long and hard about those opportunities and use them to build, to build or rebuild or gain trust. And, and find a way to, and I don't, I, I don't not have that expertise. I don't have that knowledge. But this feels strange to me. I'm going to just trust it, uh, trust, you know, uh the, 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 it can, I don't know. I don't know if you guys can figure something out.
Counselor Ducker, can you, I'm going to help you out here because I can't tell if you like it or don't like it in the language you're saying. So help us understand.
I, I'm good with it not, I'm good with keeping it in.
Okay, thank you.
But I, but I want some data.
Okay, we will get it in the quarterly reporting, like Counselor Teeter asked, and then we will analyze what they're teaching. And Chief Johnson, you're hearing us, and Captain Master Polito, we want to know what our, what our um we want to, we're interested in what our officers are doing in the classroom. So if you could figure out a way to get some kind of reporting up the chain from you guys, because that's not going to be in a synergy report. That's not going to be something that's easily generated. So you guys need to kind of figure out a touch point. And maybe it's through the call data that you're asking them to do something similar to that. Is that doable?
Yes, Mayor, that, we can definitely look into that. Um
Okay.
You know, when the officer self-initiates a call, we can have comments. Um, and they usually all do the same kind of training, whether it be for domestic violence month or sexual assault month, we'll, we'll do some kind of training in that outreach component. So we can capture that.
Okay. So I think we have Counselor Tivnan.
Uh, you asked for a strong opinion.
Strong opinions on technology.
I do have strong opinions on technology, but um, okay, I, I'll make this as short as I can. Um, I, I'd like to, it's on this subject. I'd like to respond to something that she just said. I agree. Um, working in the consulting field, I work with consultants. If consultants got their way a hundred percent of the time, I don't think we would need any other, pub- we wouldn't need public agency staff. We wouldn't need any other stakeholders because they'd be writing about everything. And um, that's just not the case. I respect the C change report. We've incorporated, I think, the majority of the recommendations that they've made with some exceptions that we've heard about tonight, and we have talked about massaging language around. Um, but I also, there was a comment I made earlier, I'm not concerned uh, or I'm concerned that we're not listening to the C change report recommendations. And I'm not, I'm not concerned that we're not listening to the report. I'm concerned that we're not listening to the district. And uh, there's, there's comments um, that I've heard from uh, bo- both of uh, these doctors we have with us here tonight. Um, uh, that I think are ex- extremely helpful for me to understand contextually. Our schools in our city, in this district, what they find is working, what they don't. Um, so taking those recommendations and then placing the lens of Beaverton School District over them to evaluate them is, is what I'm seeing is happened. Um, having to, uh, Counselor Duggar's point, uh mechanisms to start to heal wounds that have been opened um, both recently, but also uh, forever in our country. Um, I think we have to create bridges and we have to create opportunities. And I, from what I've heard tonight, this is one of those mechanisms, but also because of the uh, subject matter expertise that our, our officers can bring to several of the conversations that were mentioned in the IGA. So I'm fine with the language staying in there. I understand that C change wants to see much more of a firewall between um, law enforcement and our schools um, uh, and their students. But um, uh, I, I, my interpretation of it doesn't mean that that necessarily has to mean no contact at all in, in instructional or educational ways such as this.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we're, we're, we're at a, at a point where I think we, we can make a move here. And so uh, we want to include in the IGA, the opening statement from the language from Hillsborough. We want quarterly reporting on race, ethnicity and sex. And if possible, about our LGBTQI community. Um and we have a directive to our police chief to uh, create a policy at the, at the, at her level about disorderly conduct being the only charge. And I think we've addressed everyone's concerns. And I think if we could, Counselor Hussin, do you have more? Oh, okay, I just, I thought, just doing a church wave.
I, I want to respond to Counselor Tivnan, but I want to let you finish.
Yeah, let's, if that's not germane to getting this over the line, I think you can do that in the, in the, the dialogue portion, if you're comfortable with that. Um, so I think those are the changes. I think we've heard from every counselor. We have the concerns. We've heard from uh, our Dr. Valderras and Dr. Mead. We've heard from our city manager. Um, I think those are the, the hanging out areas. And I think we have agreement. And so I guess my question would be from the city manager and the attorney. Could we just make a motion with these changes in it and pass the IGA? Is that sufficient?
I think you would need to add language that says you're directing the city manager to administratively work with the district to implement, implement said changes um, as a part of your motion.
Is that sufficient for the attorney?
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, you're giving fairly strict instructions in terms of the changes you want made. And you're looking to the city manager to make those changes. And uh, if you wanted to then um, authorize the city, um, the mayor to sign that IGA when that's been done. Or do you, uh, do you want to do that tonight? Authorization to sign?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, yeah.
With all of these practices. And then, of course, like, it's only going to be signed if I see it in the IGA, which
Right, exactly. So, I mean, frankly, the, the council is, 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 is accepting that the two of you will accomplish what you say. And if you don't, you'll come back and talk to them about the problems. Okay.
Council president, do you have what you need for a motion?
I'm going to try.
The attorney, just keep your camera on. We got to land this plane and we need you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I know that the city of Beaverton City Council adopt an IGA with the uh, Beaverton School District as noted in today's agenda bill. Which is two, three, one, six, zero. With specific direction to city attorney to work administratively.
City manager.
Sorry, city manager to work administratively with uh, the superintendent of Beaverton Schools to add in the opening statement language using the Hillsborough language as the template. Adding into the reporting section, we would like to add language specifying that we want reporting on race, ethnicity and sex on a quarterly basis, where available LGBTQIA plus as well. Was there a third thing I'm missing?
No, our other one will be a directive of the, uh, which the city manager has. I don't think we have to make it for them.
Through your chief, okay. Was that
So
motion sufficient?
Well, uh, let me just make sure that the reporting was something that was talked about. And then the chief saying to um, the police department disorderly conduct by itself, isolated, will not be the basis for action. Was, was the movement, was that issue?
Part of this motion, that would be
It's not going to be a part of the motion and it's not be part of the IGA. It's going to be separate direction from the council through the city manager to the police chief.
And the reporting check-in is also administrative, not part of the IGA. Okay.
No, it's, no, the reporting check-in, it's going to, it, it will go in the IGA. The reporting.
That would be the third item then that was missing from the motion.
Okay, so it's three pieces. Opening statement with the Hillsborough language as our template. Adding into the reporting, the demographic information of race, ethnicity, sex, and LGBTQIA plus where, where we have it. And we want that reporting on the accord, that should be quarterly. That's the piece, right? Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, leave me breathless there for a bit. It's been moved by the council president and seconded by Counselor Kimmy. Uh, any discussion on tonight's motion? Is that uh, Counsel Hussin, is that new? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I wanted to respond a little bit to Counselor Tivnan and just generally speaking, like, I have my lived experiences with police, right? All different types. I have community members who have lived experiences, good, bad, ugly. Uh, I think it's our role here to remove our lived experiences and look at the report and the data and look at that data and as objective as a way as possible. I, I do genuinely believe that C change did a very thorough, comprehensive review. If I went off my lived experience, tonight's conversation and the way that I address this conversation would be really different. I don't do this. I don't do this with my lived experience. I do a little bit, um, but I also do it with the lens that I'm asked to represent, you know. Whatever number of folks said, we want you to do this. And so. I understand the hesitance of from folks or the hesitation around maybe not feeling comfortable with the sea change recommendations. I really struggle with that because again, my lived experience is really different. And so while I really appreciate this council helping get a couple edits or changes. I'm really struggling with the two that, again, from a consultant perspective, I didn't feel. Like I just didn't hear enough. And I would also add that I believe that there are school board members who want to weigh in on this I G A. There is a new school board as well that needs to have some input into this. So. I do appreciate every single person. It's ten forty one P M. I know it's late. Um, I have a job to do when I turn on my camera. It's not nice, not, you know, it's not who I want to be. It's what I need to be for people. And that's what I'm trying to do. And I just, I, I, I think we'd be remiss if we used overly used our lived experience to prescribe what this I G A is. And not really look at the consultant recommendation. So I really appreciate everyone's support. I really appreciate everyone asking those questions, answering those questions. But but I'm stuck and 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 I just, I I want to be really honest and vulnerable about that. So, thank you.
Counsel President.
Yeah, um, so I I made them amended motion because I think that we're all trying to serve our community as best we can. And know that we do have a really diverse group of people that we are trying to look out for here. I recognize we're in a hard spot as city council, being um, that our elected body does have a piece in the I G A. And our counterpart elected body doesn't, on the school side doesn't. I think that for me, I'm really trying to listen to the experts, including what's in that report. Um, that's our superintendent and our school district staff and our chief of police and our Y S O staff. Because they are living this. This program's been around for a while and I think they also, you know, got to help contribute to how do we make this better and really serve our community. I'm supporting this amendment or supporting this I G A with these amendments, not because I think that it's perfect, but because I believe that. Our school district is committed to making this program better. I believe that our our police officers are committed to making this program better. And we have put in place tonight some of those checkpoints that I think are really going to help us all feel confident. That we are going to make positive changes to this program that. Sea change wants us to make, that our community wants us to make, that we all want to make to be responsive and to like have us a a program. That is reflective of our population and our school district as it is now. So I just wanted to state like why I made the amended motion and why I will be voting in support tonight.
Thank you for that and thank you, Counselor Hassan, for her thoughts as well. I would say. One of the hardest jobs that this council had, one, expanding to seven, trying to get seven of us, we just spent forty minutes negotiating details to to get us down the road. It's really challenging to for us to make policies like this together. Um, we are very capable. We're doing it multiple times. I just want to say to the council, I'm glad that we were able to do this when there's definitely. Pieces that we all disagreed with or felt strongly about that maybe didn't get in. Um, you know, I I really want the school district to have a review committee and that's, you know, it's not going to be in this motion tonight. Because I didn't feel like we could get it over the line, but I think inspecting what we expect is incredibly important to me. And maybe we could get there through the quarterly data. Um, and and being able to see how our S R Os are being used in the school. Um, and it's really important that like. While I hope the school board could weigh in, that's not our lane. And I would encourage the school board members if they felt like they weren't heard through this process. And if that's what is being said, they need to go through their process and go with their chair and work with their superintendent to get their voices heard. Because that is what we elected them and sent there to do. We struggle with that too. We can't reset the clock every time somebody's on board. And where we're at, I would say this is not a perfect agreement. Uh, but it's a meaningful first step in the right direction. And I would say I've been begging the school district since I've pretty much been an elected official. To have these conversations around S R Os, uh, to get us moving, to have a seat at the table. And so I I look forward to our quarterly check ins and the council always reserves the right to change. Uh, to dissolve an agreement in the future if we think it's not going the right direction. Counselor D- uh, Duggar.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, as a new newer, newish counselor, although coming up on my first year, which seems crazy to me. I tried, my goal tonight was, I wasn't sure, honestly, until about ten minutes ago, how I was, I was probably going to vote no on this. Just because, but I'm, I think one of the things I told you all. Back in our retreat was that I'm pragmatic and I will be pragmatic and that is the driving, like. We have partners here. None, none of us love everything. I don't love everything about this. You guys have heard my concerns. But I trust the people that are involved. I trust Chief Jepson. I trust the school board. I trust the superintendent. And. I'll be honest, like, it is almost, I'm on the East Coast for those of you who don't know. So if I stumble on my words, it's almost two in the morning for me. And I'm running on, I'm, this is about a twenty one hour day for me. Uh, so I apologize for that. I'm exhausted, but I also, like, this was really important for me to stay up for because. This is a really complicated thing. I don't think we've ever received this many emails. On any issue, which was saying a lot because two weeks ago it was the budget and my goodness, we received a lot then too. So I'm going to trust, I'm going to trust the people here. You've heard a lot of concerns. I'm going to keep a close eye on this. I am not a school policy expert, but this has gotten my attention and I'm going to ask all of you to please put your best effort. And make in our, you know, uh, is a few of you already said, like. Making our students not only safe but feel safe and operationalizing that through our data, through everything, through our relationship building. I don't know how, you know, how I'm going to vote on this next year or when the next time it comes up. But a lot of it will be based on what we do over the next year together. And I I really want to see us continue. To move down that space of creating safety for marginalized students, creating good relationships. I've, the other, the other thing I've learned, I've got, I've got a long job ahead of me of getting to know. Uh, that both superintendents and the school board, I I want to build a relationship because this is important to my community and I want to, I want to, I've got some work to do there. So I I hope this is our first step in getting to know each other as well. Uh, but I I just, I I appreciate all the. The compromise tonight, you know, I I think I can live with it. Thanks.
Right, um, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
Hurt Meyer Prig.
Yes.
Hassan.
No.
Kimmy.
Yes.
Teeter.
No.
Tiffna.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Passes five, two.
Uh, well, thank you, Doctor Valderraz. Uh, thank you, uh, Doctor Mead, uh, our police chief, Captain Master Polito. And our city manager, uh, for holding this special meeting for us tonight to work through where we were. I think we got through the majority of what uh, the the council wanted to see accomplished, so.